Welcome to the Smithfield Planning Board Meeting for Thursday, April 17, 2025. Before we begin, quiet a place. Before we begin, in case of emergency, there are two main exits out of the chambers. The first is to the left side of the stage, up the stairs through the doorway and down the stairway out the backside of the hall. Second is out the back of the chambers to the exit doorway to the stairway out in front of the town hall. The men's facilities are through the back of the chambers, past the stairway and around the corner on the right. The ladies' facilities are through the back door of the chamber, straight up the stairs and on the left. Please do not use the elevator in times of emergency. Necessarily, a review of the meeting minutes for March 20, 2025. Do you have any comments, amendments, et cetera? Do we have a motion? Motion to approve? Do we have a second? Second. All in favor? Aye. All not in favor? The ayes have it. Regular gender, old business, Amelia's Way, 260 Old County Road, ID 2405, public hearing. My understanding is that's the continuance?
Yep.
Or request for a continuance?
Another one, Mr. Chairman. I did write a letter for the record. We have, we think we're done with peer review with the engineers, but we just got some DEM comments two days ago. We need to respond to those, and so we're asking for another month continuance. We hope our response will be in. Will DEM have a response back to us? We don't know, but we hope they do for next month. That's the best we can do.
Any questions of the board members with respect to the request for a continuance?
Mr. Chairman, how many requests for continuance does this make now?
I don't know how many exactly. It's been a number of them.
Four, I would say four, maybe five or six.
This is, this is just ringing all sorts of red flags for me. What would happen if we refused the continuance? Would they have to?
Well, I...
I guess we'll find out if...
You know, there's a lot of, a lot of work has been done on this particular project and...
We're part of a, we're engaging in peer review, which arguably would make for a better plan, and we've got lots of peer review from the town's consulting engineers, and they do do it quickly and will respond quickly, so I would respectfully suggest to you it's part of the process.
Is requesting a continuance to the next date in May, is that reasonable period of time to have that information in or want to be back here in the same position? Yeah, Mr. Casali, come up if you'd like.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Just for the record, Joe Casali, Registered Professional Engineer, Office at 300 Post Jordan Warwick. I'm not sure if you're aware, there's actually a pending DEM shutdown for two weeks starting tomorrow. We do computer systems there, so I can't speak if it'll be ready in May. We certainly hope so. We've been back and forth with them a couple of times to a date certain, or to June is fine with the applicant as well. We didn't want to come back here until we had all the permits in here in hand.
Any other questions? June, I think June is more realistic if we're going to be inclined to grant the extension.
So we will see all this back and forth. For the record, once you come back before us, we'll see the peer reviews, the latest and greatest peer reviews, everything. We'll see everything.
Yeah, our anticipation in my gears, in June, we come back before you with our insignificant alteration permit from DEM in approval from the peer review engineer.
Okay. Any other questions of the board members?
When you make that motion, please, I know you know this is the date in June, so the public is aware, but not just in the June meeting.
The June meeting will probably do. We'll use the microphone.
The June meeting will be moved up a week, I believe, or moved back a week because Juneteenth would be our normal meeting date, so I guess it's the board's pleasure if you want it to be later in June.
Any board, any pleasure for, in terms of potential vacations in June or issues like that? Doesn't matter to me. For later or earlier? Later? So what would be the week after?
26th.
June 26th?
Yep.
June 26th.
Mr. Kane, June 26th, okay? Mr. Casali? Okay.
I'll make a motion to continue to June 26th.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. All not in favor? The ayes have it, and for the members of the public, please treat today's hearing as notice for the continuance to June 26th. There will not be separate documentation sent.
Thank you.
Next matter, residents at Greenville Farms, ID 2008, public hearing.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, John Mancini, I'm attorney representing the applicant this evening, West Greenwich Road LLC, have offices at 55, 56 Pine Street, Providence, Rhode Island. So, Mr. Chairman, this is a continuation of our public hearing that we've had with respect to the applicant's request for a comprehensive permit concerning the property located at 89 West Greenwich Road, Assessors Platt, 44, Lot 82. As the board is aware, this is before you as a comprehensive permit pursuant to around General Laws 4553-4. We have had extensive amount of information provided to the board. We've had...
Could I raise that issue for a second? Because there's a concern in regards to this board's ability to be able to fully have reviewed that material
Yeah.
in anticipation for today's hearing, given that it was filed to us not within the 48-hour requirement. So obviously, we didn't have the opportunity to get hard copies of any of the material. Some of the board members may have received the emails with the information. With that being said, you have two options. You can move to go forward without that material being reviewed in full, which is not my pleasure. I think you should have your best foot forward, and I think the board should have an opportunity to have, opportunity to review the material. In that regard, I suggest continuing a decision to the next hearing date. Obviously, you have people here today. If you'd like to have them heard, I think that's reasonable, and that's a reasonable accommodation to everybody, in fairness to the members of this board, to give them an opportunity to give deference to the project as it should be. Like your comments in that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I completely agree. What I was going to say is that I know that the board has received a lot of information, not just the new information, but the existing information which has been provided to you, the multitude of plans, the reports that have been submitted, and then we did additional information based upon the comments that the board had at that last meeting, and...
They're pretty detailed.
There are, and so I have no objection to continuing the decision to the May meeting, allowing the board the opportunity not only to hear the oral testimony that's going to be provided to you by our experts, but also to review in depth the documents that we provided you. You have to date received a traffic analysis that was prepared by Crossman Engineering. You also now have the benefit of the peer review of the traffic analysis done by Crossman, reviewed by Bryant Associates. We have provided you an extensive environmental impact study. We've also provided you a Phase 1 report done by Sage Engineering. You'll hear the testimony tonight of Rick Mandel from Sage Engineering about that report and also addressing some of the questions and concerns that the members had at the last meeting. We've also provided to you previously fiscal impact study with regards to the impact this project has on the economics of the town, specifically focusing on age, on school-aged children, which was a concern and an issue brought by the board. Joe Lombardo will be here this evening to testify about that issue. And then finally, you requested of us to provide you a report to identify consistencies or inconsistencies with the town's comprehensive plan. So Ed Pramental is also going to testify this evening. He's provided you a report. I know that report was just submitted to the board, and so we'll hear his testimony. You can hold your questions to the, to the next meeting if you want, or you can close public hearing tonight. Leave that to your, leave that to you. It's your prerogative. And then I submitted a memorandum this afternoon essentially just summarizing, you know, the request that we're making, the standard of review that the board has, basically meaning what, what is the requirements of the board per the statute, and then the multitude of reports and giving all summation of those reports as they relate to the, to the six prongs, the six required findings of fact that you have to make under 4553-4. So with that, Mr. Chairman, unless you have any questions, do me?
I don't, but I don't want to, I want to make sure my suggestion is, the fellow board members agree with my suggestion.
I'd let you know when the clock is.
When the clock?
Yeah.
I think the clock runs out today.
Yeah, so that's got to be continued by, if we're requesting that we move the decision to the next month, in fairness to them, we got to agree to move the clock as well. But in order for us to digest the material intelligently, I think that's what should be done. Any objections to the board members?
No, I'm sure. Okay.
All right, so just so the record's clear, you have the information we've provided you. That's part of the record. The time period in which for you to make the decision is this evening, but by agreement of the parties, we'll continue that to the next regularly scheduled meeting of the planning board, which is May 15th. And if there's any other issues that arise as a result of this meeting, we can address them in that time period. Okay?
Very good.
Okay, very good. So with that, we've, one of the things that we really haven't heard, although we've discussed it peripherally, we really haven't focused in and drilled down on, and I want to do that this evening, and that's traffic. And as I mentioned, you do have the peer report now, and you also have the report from Paul Bannon from Crossman. So with that, I want to bring Mr. Bannon up and have him testify as to his report and answer any questions that you have.
If you can, yes.
I have a question. The reports that Mr. Attorney Mancini is referring to, some reports were forwarded to us, I believe, through email.
That's correct.
Okay. Are there any hard copies that are available to us? It seems to me that if we're going to hear testimony tonight from experts or witnesses to provide information on this, we shouldn't, it seems, in my mind, you're putting the cot before the horse because we don't have any of the material upfront that we could look at and review with regard to the testimony that's going to be provided. If we're going to do that at the next meeting, it seems to me that hard copies of the material that is going to be testified to tonight by the experts should be given to us, not through an email, because to be perfectly honest, you know, sometimes you can't get those things open to get, to get it downloaded.
Yeah, no, that's fine. So you have all those reports. They've already been handed to you. The traffic report is not a new report. The only thing that was emailed that is, well, there's two things. So I emailed the reports again just to ensure that the record has the reports and that you have them. The only new reports that is additional information is Mr. Pramental's report, and Mr. Bannon did a response or reply to the peer report done by Bryant Associates. The report from Bryant Associates you should have, that's your consultant. The original traffic report by Crossman Engineering, that was originally submitted as part of our application, so you should have a hard copy of that. Mr. Pramental's report's the only report that is new that I believe we also have hard copies of. You should have that. I did a, essentially, another email blast, if you will, just to make sure that the record has all of the documents and all of the, all of the reports. I'll get you as much information in a hard format that you need, and you can go through it. Then you got the witnesses here, they're going to some, give you a summation of that, of those reports. But again, the only, the only thing that is new is Pramental's report and Paul Bannon's reply to your peer engineer report.
You're saying why even do it now then without, why even listen to testimony, right?
You have all the information, so what information do you think you don't have that you should have? And we'll get you a package of all the information in a binder, hard copy, and we'll continue it to May 15th, and then we'll extend the clock a little further. You tell me what you believe you do not have, that you have not reviewed, that you need to review before you hear the testimony of the witnesses.
Am I correct, the only new thing with the traffic study is your experts' comments to Crossman?
Correct. And that's, and that's what's been emailed. So I don't know if you have a hard copy of that, and additionally...
That's what, that's what we don't.
Okay. And that's, that's not significant, but we can, we can arrange, if you need that, we can work through that. The other issue is Mr. Pramental's report. I don't know if you have a hard copy of that.
We do, we don't have a hard copy of that. And I don't believe the, your other consultant, I'm not quite sure we have a hard copy of that report.
The environmental, you have a full environmental report. The fiscal impact study from Joe Lombardo, that's a full report. That was originally provided.
That was what?
That was originally provided with the application. It's part of the checklist items. It was a requirement of Master Plan to submit that. So tell me what you don't have.
My thing, my problem, what I'm trying to figure out, why even talk about, are you going to come back and talk about it when we get all the paperwork again in May?
I'm not coming back, there's nothing more, look...
Are the experts going to be talking, how are we going to?
The experts?
How are they going to ask questions of your experts now without the paperwork that we got? That's my, I got it, because I, I just got some time downloading myself. My thing is, why don't we just do all this review when we come back the next time, is what I'm saying. It seems like, how are we going to ask questions? Your experts are going to testify, and we don't have any hard copies or anything to, we're going to just go like this, and then we're going to come back next time with the paperwork after we read it. Are they going to be here to ask questions again?
So let's do this then. You, you have the, you have the report from the environmental, because you had, you read it at the last meeting, you had questions about the environmental at the last meeting. That's not new. So I'll have Mr. Rick Mandel testify as to that. I'll, I can bring Mr. Bannon back next week if you, I mean, next month, if you don't have, if you don't have his supplemental report, but you do have his original report, so he should testify as to that report. You've read that. Mr. Pramental, I'm sorry, Mr. Lombardo's report has been presented, so he's here to testify. You read that because you had questions about that at the last meeting. We can have him testify. The only one we could reserve is Mr. Pramental to the May meeting, if that's what you want.
How about this? You did mention when we talked about continuing the matter, and my suggestion to have your people testify, they came here today. Let's hear, my suggestions, let's hear from them. You indicated you make them available for the next hearing to the extent the board had further questions after reviewing a full amount of the material. That's what I suggest.
Mr. Chairman, I think we can potentially respond to what we hear, and the next meeting will have a...
That's my feeling.
Right, right. I think it's worth hearing.
Well, you have the original traffic report, so you've reviewed that traffic report, so, and you have the peer review, you've reviewed the peer review, so it shouldn't be, the only questions that, the only report you don't have that you may have not reviewed yet is the response. You have the environmental report, you reviewed and read that thoroughly, right? We had questions on that, so we can hear Mr. Mandel's report, and you reviewed the stormwater drainage report represented by Sam Hemingway, and you have the DEM permit, but we don't have the peer review report, so we'll have to wait for that. And you have Mr. Lombardo's report, so I think it's appropriate. And if I'm here, if I'm hearing the board, I mean, I'm hearing that the board's saying that they haven't reviewed the information. So is that, is that the issue? Because I don't know, I'm confused.
Obviously, the board would have had to review whatever's been filed previously. It's what is new.
Correct.
As I understand, what is new is your traffic and engineer's comments to the peer review, which is limited in comparison to the actual reports themselves. Mr. Pramental's report, which is extensive, we have not, or some people have not had the opportunity to fully review your comments, which is more of an argument why this project falls within the parameters of the statute. That's new, but we don't necessarily need that to ask questions.
Correct.
So I, I think we let whoever's here testify, bring them back, and if anyone has questions, they can raise the questions when you bring them back.
Correct. So at that point, I'll, I'll let Mr. Bannon testify as to his original report and as to Bryant's Associates' report, and then he can give a summation as to his new report and will reserve if you have any additional questions regarding the response or reply that is proposed.
John, before you proceed, Mr. Chairman, Chris is making copies of everything that was produced, everything that John emailed over the last day or two.
Is he going to be able to make enough a copy?
Yes.
What, do we want to adjourn or a little bit while he's copying?
No, because Paul Bannon's report you already have, the traffic report's been submitted.
Well, what he's saying is copying it right now. No, the new material.
It's only a three or four-page letter.
I understand, but what I've been told by the solicitor is that's being copied right now for the benefit of the members.
So why don't we skip over Paul and the environmental report?
Why don't we do that?
Rick Mandel, because there's nothing...
There's nothing new.
Yeah.
Okay.
If you could state your name, then I'll swear you in and your address and where you're from.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Rick Mandel. I'm a senior principal with Sage Environmental.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do. M-A-N-D-I-L-E. Yes, ma'am. So I understand you folks have seen my report.
Yes.
Without jumping into it right away, did you have any specific questions for me? Otherwise, I can give you a brief overview of what Sage's involvement was as it relates to...
I think that'd be a good idea.
Great. So back in January of 2023, seems like forever ago, Sage was retained to perform what's known as a Phase 1 environmental site assessment of this parcel of land to answer a question. The question that we're supposed to answer as part of the Phase 1 process is that, basically, is there evidence of release or a threat of a release of oil or hazardous materials to the property? And for those of you who may not be familiar with a Phase 1 environmental assessment, essentially, it's a historic research effort, where we go back and try to figure out what land uses occurred on a piece of real estate that might have resulted in a release of oil or hazardous materials at or to it. Now, that's significant at or to from a liability standpoint, because, believe it or not, in our regulatory environment, you can own a piece of contaminated real estate that's being contaminated for an upgrading or a neighboring property and still be responsible for the cleanup, even though somebody else might have contaminated your property because they're your neighbor. I mention that because it's significant, which I think you all folks know, that not just this property, but many properties immediately surrounding and abutting this property were historically apple orchards, right? Apple orchards, as we know, use lots of pesticides and herbicides for keeping the fruit alive and in good shape. So the history of this property, we go back, again, it's a historic research effort, right? We go back to the 1930s, and we look at historic aerial photos, and I think, as you can see in my report, you see the generations of historic aerial photos and the use or the partial use of this property having been an orchard intermittently, or at least fruit tree growth, which is what appears to have been here, on and off for a number of years right up until the mid 2000s. Again, along with many of the surrounding properties also having been heavily used for orchards over the decades. So when we see a property use of an orchard, how do they, how would folks apply herbicides or pesticides, primarily pesticides, to orchards? They spray it on the trees, right? So when we look to evaluate whether or not a property has been contaminated with orchard use, you typically test the top two feet of those soils. That top two feet is what DEM expects us to do from an environmental exposure assessment standpoint. Typically, those sprays are going to be bound up in the top couple of feet of soil. Those types of herbicides or pesticides don't readily move through soils. So at the conclusion of the Phase 1, we recommended that soils, the top two feet in the areas of the property previously used for orchard purposes, as well as those areas that we believe will be redeveloped, that those soils be sampled. So we collected 12, a dozen soil samples, 0 to 12 out here, and no surprise, we found analytical or laboratory evidence of pesticides, a little bit of herbicides, application in those soils. Now, the good news in Rhode Island is we have bright line or numerical criteria, standards with which we compare those results in soils too. And all of the results, even though we find the evidence of historic use of pests and herbs, they're all well below the applicable DEM standards for this type of a property. And we ended it there. Questions?
Yeah, so you're saying just the top two feet were tested?
Yes.
So when they go to put in the wells and the foundations, they're going to go down below that? So you're saying there are going to be no problems with soil that's being taken from the 12, stored on the sides while they're digging? It's going to be piled up? Now, will air infiltrate the soil while it's piled up and blow that toxics that are suitable on your property onto others? How can you guarantee that while you're working that property and that pile of soil, it doesn't contaminate other areas?
So let's unpack that. Remember, the laboratory tests identified these contaminants to be compliant there below.
I understand they're compliant with that property, but other people's property don't have any, and they don't want to be compliant, they don't want to have any.
How do you know that?
How do I know that?
How do you know that?
How do you know other than that?
We don't.
Well, that's what I'm saying. How do we, my point is, why even take the chance of that soil while it's piled up blowing on to other people's property?
I'm sure.
Is there a way of making sure that doesn't happen so the people around here, while they're working in their yard, having a coffee, that that soil doesn't blow onto their property and contaminate their property? Now they're going to clean up their property because it was contaminated through air infiltration of the other property that was normally, wasn't moving because it was down on the ground?
So yes...
EPA does a lot of stuff like that. The way they get the toxics out of the soil is what? To heat it up and put it through the air? To heat it up and put it through the air, correct?
Not these types of contaminants, no. But let me answer your question if I could. Let me answer your question if I could. So what you're asking for is that a soil management plan or a dust management plan be developed so that dust, if it were to be generated, won't find its way offsite. I don't think that's an unreasonable request. I'm sure we can manage that.
I think we owe to the area to make sure that goes out.
Agreed.
The purpose of just sampling a certain level, is that because it's not expected that the contaminants would be below that level?
Correct.
Right. So there's no concern scientifically from excavating at a depth lower than that particular sample level because there's no concern below that level of contaminants?
Right, right. It's a couple of things. So DEM looks at the top two feet. We call it direct exposure criteria. So that's the lens that you would, if there was going to be an exceedance. Remember, let's remember how the contaminants, and again, I'm putting air quotes around contaminants, how the pesticides or herbicides come to be located. They were sprayed on trees, right? So they would naturally fall to the surface beneath them, and they're usually just bound up in those soils. They tend not to migrate vertically into groundwater. So that's why we focus on the top two feet. So theoretically, that would be where your highest concentrations of those pests or herbs would be, is in that top two feet, which is why you focus on that. That would be your worst case lens or zone where you would look for that stuff. Again, we see them there, not surprisingly, but well below the applicable DEM standards.
I have another question for you.
Sure.
I grew up around here, and I do know for a fact there was cornfields here. Now, that cornfields were rototilled down in there. So how far down? Rototiller goes down like two and a half feet. So was that taken into consideration? You're saying apple spray and stuff and that. Well, cornfields are done with different herbicides and stuff and everything, and they're rototilled, you know, they're more septic in the groundwater easier.
Agreed. When we looked at the historic aerial photographs for this site and the immediate abutters, it looks like it was all fruit tree out here.
I'm sure there's pitches out there to disagree with that all being because there was cornfields or in there, but that's neither here nor there.
Again, I'm looking at the aerial photos.
My question is, if there is there, would there be a different procedure for that groundwater to be tested with rototill?
No. If we were to consider to look deeper in areas like in Eastern Mass, Massachusetts, where they do root crop, like turnips, those types of root crops will tend to introduce a pesticide at a slightly deeper level in soil, but generally speaking, you're going to find it up to apply.
Like I said, I grew up on a farm for 30 years. I know FMC, they used to come up every other day and tell me a chemical was not good for you. I'm surprised I'm still standing. But it's a very serious thing with these pesticides and stuff like that for surrounding people and stuff like that. So I want to thank you for acknowledging, you know, it can't be piled without it being tented or something like that. And next time you come, I'd like to see a proposal for that. And also, if there is areas that have been rototilled and there shows it was cornfields or something like that, can that be tested? Be tested again for deeper pesticides?
The same pesticides, the same pesticides and herbicides, they're broad tests with many different constituents in it. If there was something there, it should capture it.
Any other questions of the board members of this particular witness?
Could you educate me on the application and the fact that DEM and EPA have no promulgated standards for diaedrine?
Diaedrine.
Diaedrine? Yeah. Tell me, could you tell us about that?
It's one of a number of constituents, herbicides applied to fruit tree orchards. You know, we're using the most current standards and analytical methods or laboratory methods when we do this evaluation or these evaluations.
So that's the RDEC standard? What's the RDEC standard?
Residential Direct Exposure. So we're comparing to, right? So in Rhode Island, we compare to either residential use or commercial industrial. And you can imagine, they're going to allow a more contamination on a property to remain for a commercial use versus a residential use.
So that's like a scientific procedure that's accepted by laboratories looking at this?
Well, the standards, right? So DEM promulgates the standards, be it for soil or groundwater. So we compare, depending on the property use, which in this case wants to be residential, we are comparing the laboratory results to DEM's residential soil standards to evaluate whether or not we're above or below the residential criteria. And in this, in these analytic, in these tests, we're below the residential criteria.
But in the case of this particular pesticide, it states that neither DEM nor EPA have promulgated standards for which to compare these compounds. What does that mean?
It means we don't have a standard with which to compare.
So how?
What you look at, you look at all of the other standards that are available to us, and we're all below. And so when you take, you take that data.
I get that, but isn't that comparing a different compound to another which has standards and level, recommended levels, but this one, this diaedrine, doesn't have?
They just haven't developed a standard for it yet. But of those, of those contaminants that are commonly associated with pests and herbs, we've tested in there below, significantly below, the residential criteria.
All right. I'm going to have to think about that.
He brings up an interesting point. Are there any chemicals that you have found on this property that have not been listed that you have a standard to test on? Is this just that, just that one? Is that a synthetic? Is that the reason?
They're all, for the most part, synthetic.
Well, they're synthetics and new, but years ago, they weren't, they weren't synthetics.
Now, these, again, this is the analytical battery that is commonly used to evaluate whether or not there has been an exceedance of pests or herbs on a site like this.
But you still can sort of, he brings up an interesting point, though. You still, there's still no standard for a chemical that you found. How do we know that it is good or bad? Would you put your family? Let me ask you a serious question. Would you put your family on it? They would not know that answer?
Yes.
You would?
Yeah.
Without knowing the answer to whether it was toxic or not?
I know enough about.
That's not the question, sir.
You asked me a question, I answered.
No, I'm just saying, without the knowledge of knowing what it is and what the tolerance level is, you still feel safe without knowing?
Knowing how this property will likely be developed and knowing what I know about past historic use and taking all of the information that we've gathered about this site, yes, I would be comfortable with that.
What are the dangers of that particular toxin that's not, that there's no standard either from EPA or DEM?
So generally speaking, if EPA or DEM has not yet established a standard for a particular chemical compound at this point, you know, 40 plus years after Earth Day, generally speaking, it's not that significant a chemical of concern.
Do we know that or are you just basing that on the fact that because they haven't put a standard, you're arriving at that conclusion? Or do you know enough about that particular compound or chemical to make that point?
If you'd like, I can circle back to you with toxicological data on diaedrine, if that would help the group.
I guess, because there's been the issue raised by several board members, could be helpful.
Sure. I can provide that.
Anthony, what is the title? Is the town liable for any of the, like, for any of these toxicities that we say that, well, we know, blah, blah, blah? Is the town liable?
We don't own the property, obviously.
No, but we're all king, saying that it was all right to live there.
We are analyzing the data, and you ultimately have to make a decision based on the evidence that was presented as to whether or not that's a fact that is going to be considered.
Yeah, but my point is something like that. We have a chemical that we don't know what the ratio is. If it finds out the ratio is bad, is the town going to be liable for not fulfilling, making sure that that wasn't used or, you know, we're safe? I just want to see any liability for the town.
You're not going to have any liability in the sense that you're basing your decisions on what's being presented.
Yeah, we're bonded.
We have to clean it up. We have to clean it up. We'll have to, say there is a problem.
The owner, the owner has to, the owner is responsible for the environment, any environmental contamination on that property. Right.
Any other questions of the witness? Thank you. Sure.
Just so we're clear, in your analysis and in your report, did you find any toxins or any contaminants at the site which exceed DEM or EPA, EPA-prolongated regulations?
No.
In your report and in your analysis, did you find any chemicals or any toxins at the site which would in any way significantly impact the general health and welfare of existing residents or future residents of the development?
No.
And in your analysis, is it your conclusion that no further testing is warranted at this property?
Yes.
Can you tell me why you concluded that there are no further testing is warranted?
We've compared the soil results to the available DEM standards for the potential contaminants of concern. We identified those contaminants of concern that we would expect to see associated with a former orchard, but below the residential thresholds, which have been developed based on toxicological studies to allow for residential use.
And in your professional opinion, is the toxicological studies that you relied upon, are they reasonable and are they compliant with DEM regulations?
I personally, we have not relied on the toxicological studies themselves, but the Rhode Island DEM standards, soil standards, that relied on those toxicological studies with which to arrive at those standards.
In your historical analysis of the property, have you found any other type of land use that in your opinion would be, would significantly and negatively, I'm sorry, in your historical analysis of the property, have you found any type of land use for this property that would lead you to be concerned about, about those uses having an impact to the health and welfare of future residents and present residents at the property?
No.
And is it your testimony that the historical consistent use of this property has been farming?
It appears to have been orchards, based on the historic aerial photos beginning in 1939 and continuing all the way through present.
And aside from herbicides and pesticides, did you find any contaminants such as release of hazardous waste or materials?
No.
Did you find any solid waste on the site?
No.
So based upon your, based upon your report, do you have any concerns or issues that you believe the property owner should address prior to construction?
No, other than the board member's suggestion for proper dust control.
And dust control? So the, my question to you is, is the type of contaminants and chemicals that you've found consistent with the use of farming at the site such that they would migrate by a windstorm or a rainstorm?
Dust is dust. If it becomes airborne, it can go anywhere. But again, those contaminants are below residential. I think just as a best management practice, I don't disagree with a dust control measure, which is likely going to be required anyways along with stormwater controls.
In your opinion, and this is only in your professional opinion, if you know, would that be part of a soil erosion permit or part of a soil soil erosion management system, management process?
I would expect that to be part of that type of a plan, a soil management plan.
Just one follow up question. The toxin that we've been talking about that does not have a standard with either DEM or EPA, without speculating, do you know why?
I think it's very common, but it's also likely not nearly as toxic as some of the other pests and herbs, which is why they haven't established a standard for it.
Thank you.
Follow up on that, if I may, Mr. Chairman. Can you describe to us what that toxin is and where it would normally be found?
Again, it's a, it's a common one that has been used on fruit trees and orchards for decades, and they tend to break down much more quickly in the environment, which is again, another reason why they don't likely have a standard currently.
Did you find, in your opinion, having this toxin or this chemical on site, which is consistent with farm use, is it, does it lead to a significant negative impact to health and wealth, to the health and welfare of either future residents or existing residents?
It shouldn't. Diaedrine? Thank you.
Just a point of clarification. There was mentioned that orchard was the only use there agriculture, but I believe that there was hemp grown on that lot just prior to or after the current owner bought it. I don't know if you care to comment on, because I believe that had it been plowed or harrowed to plant the hemp. So, and I know that there's no limit on agricultural use, that you can go in and plow and dust can blow everywhere when they're, when they're doing that. So I don't know if you would care to comment on, you know, that agricultural use and whether, you know, that would impact on the findings.
The most recent aerial photograph that I had, again, and we did this work in January of 2023, and the interviews with property owners and those supposedly knowledgeable of the site, I didn't see anything about hemp use. But we weren't, we weren't informed of that?
Okay. We can't, we can't, we can't, we can't do it this way.
I, that's my, my point is, I grew up around, I, I could testify that it was there, you know?
We can't have.
We can stipulate that it was.
Excuse me for one, one minute. Please, the members of the public, I know you have an interest in this matter, but we got to do it the right way. You're going to have an opportunity to speak your mind on the issues. That's when it should be done and not during the presentation of the case in chief. So I appreciate it if you could take that into consideration. Okay. Okay, let's get back to your question, Charlie.
I want to thank you for your honesty, and I just want to make sure that nobody talks you out of the idea of that soil can be airborne and we want to make sure that it's taken care of correctly.
Agreed.
I heard the attorney talking to you a little bit like he doesn't think it's a big problem, but you and I both agree that it's a big problem. It should be that it could, that dust does travel and infiltrate. Look at 295 or a highway when it put the soil up there, it blows over the Johnston, North Providence. I mean, it can get into an atmosphere that can go all over, just like that, you know? So I want to thank you for standing up. Thank you.
I just want to follow up on that question. So my question to you is, if the, if dust particles do become airborne, based upon your analysis and based upon the level of the, of the contaminants compared to DEM regulations, is that deepness as, as environment, is that an environmental concern or deemed an environmental concern?
Remember, they're below the DEM residential threshold, so theoretically, no. However, being a good neighbor. However, being a good neighbor, I would recommend, and it's likely going to be, a part of a soil management and stormwater management plan for development like this. But to your point, John, it, it, no, it isn't, you know, because it's below those, it's not going to increase someone's risk of cancer, given these sta- these numbers.
To what, just to clarify, to what you testified earlier, it does not, does it create a significant negative impact to the health and welfare of future residents at this property and existing residents at the property?
Not based on the toxicological, you know, these standards, they're below residential.
And because they're below residential standards, what does that mean, so that we're clear on how DEM treats it?
It, it means that there shouldn't be an increase in cancer risk as a result of exposure to those.
In your opinion, based upon your knowledge, does it mean that it's tolerable and permissible?
I'm not a lawyer. That sounds more of a-
Well, let's, let's ask it this way, does it mean that it's within the guidelines of what DEM would, would, would permit?
Would permit on a, on a site, but as you know, there's nuisance laws and whatnot. That's right. You wouldn't want the stuff blowing onto somebody's property. I have this question, he's answered, he's, he's answered the question, my question, six times already, and I see what you're trying to do, you're trying to get it so he, he doesn't know what he's talking about, like, oh, it can't be that bad of a, you're doing your job, I understand that, but how long are you going to continue browbeating this guy of what he should not said what he said? That's what you're doing.
No, yeah, no, my question is-
You're doing your job, I understand, but how long are you going to do it for?
So, but you're making it sound like this property is a nuclear site, it's not a nuclear site, there's no, there's no, there are people walking around with three eyes and four, four heads out of this site.
I asked the question.
It's a farm, it has pesticides-
One, one at a time, please.
No, I'm just saying, I'm saying the point, I'm making the point. The point is that this site is well below the requirements of DEM, it's not a contaminated site, there's no issues of, there are no environmental issues or concerns. The Phase 1 identifies the fact that it is not, doesn't require a Phase 2, there's no additional DEM requirements. The idea of covering the, the soil or cover or doing dust control management is perfectly acceptable, but not because of a concern for the neighborhood or a concern for the residents, but because it's part of the soil and erosion permit, it's part of good and best practices for construction. And again, the point is, the site is not contaminated, it does not raise a risk of environmental contamination, and based upon the regulations, the standard is, is there a significant negative impact to public health and welfare? And the answer to that, as confirmed, is no. That's my-
I, I do have one question. Mr. Phillips brought up about the prior use of the property with respect to hemp and the fact that your report and investigation did not have that understanding. Is that point, if that was in fact accurate, is that significant in any way to the, to your ultimate conclusions in this case?
It's unlikely, and what I, why I say that is, remember, we tested for soil, herbs and pests, the common ones, you know, I would need to look into what if any pesticides might have been applied to a hemp crop. Generally speaking, your highest levels of soil contamination are the result of fruit crops, because they require so much herbicide use, so I, I would doubt very much that, that the testing that was performed would have missed something from the use or the partial use for hemp.
Would it matter the, the depth in which the test was done, assuming a different use?
It shouldn't. I mean, hemp, as far as I know, it's, it's a surface-growing plant, you're not harvesting a root, it's like a tree, if you would.
Okay. Any other questions?
But it is rototilled, the ground was rototilled to change the going to, it is. I got a, I, I, one question, something like that, was it tested for oils? We did not test for oils. Because you know that those trees have to be sprayed with oil to keep them- So, so the pesticides would typically, when applied, would be applied with some type of, I don't call them a petroleum, you'll call it an oil-based material, it could be grape seed oil that is used as a, as a vehicle with which to attach those pesticides to a leaf. Generally, those are organic, if you will, oils, they're not a petroleum oil. No, I, no, I understand that, but were they tested for, you know, that, that material itself too? You would see if there was something problematic in that type of a vegetable-related oil, it would show up typically in the analytical battery that we ran. And how would it, would it show up as a chemical or a petroleum? It would be one of the ones, you, you would see evidence of it in, in the analytical work. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we can have Mr. Bannon testify now, I think you have a copy of his reply report.
I don't think we received that, yeah.
I think it's unrealistic to expect people to read this and comprehend it and ask questions right now.
It is, that's why we suggested hearing from him, and then if we have further questions when we get back together after the board members have been fully able to digest the material, Mr. Mancini indicated that was agreeable.
Good evening.
Want to have you state your name, your address?
Paul Bannon, Senior Project Director, Crosswind Engineering, Jefferson Boulevard in Waller.
And you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing about the truth?
I do.
Okay.
Good evening. Crosswind Engineering was retained to conduct a traffic impact study for this residential project. As part of that effort, we worked with the site engineer to review the site plans to ensure that the driveway was appropriately placed for safe and efficient access. We conducted numerous site visits to various times of the day, days of the week to observe traffic operations. I'm very familiar with the project area, having done multiple projects over, over the years. We conducted a data collection program, including the automatic traffic court accounts, collects 24-hour data, 24-hour. We also counted, completed manual turning movement counts at the West Greenville intersection with Smith during peak traffic periods. We obtained accident data from the Smithfield Police Department to determine if there are any concerns relative to frequency and severity of crashes in the immediate area. We inventoried the project area for land use, existing roadway conditions, to determine horizontal, vertical geometry and site distances. And then we developed a trip generation estimate for the residential land use for the project using IT trip generation methods, and then we assessed the safety and operations of, of that future condition. Briefly going over the project area, the parcel is located along the eastbound side, West Greenville Road, approximately 1,400 feet north of Smith Ave. It has over 600 feet of frontage along West Greenville Ave and is comprised of approximately 43 acres. Land use in the area is primarily residential, although there are a few commercial lots in the vicinity of the intersection. The project consists of 74 residential units in duplex townhouse-style configurations. Each property has a garage and a driveway for two vehicles, plus there is an additional on-street parking for guests and visitors to the neighborhood. Access and ingress will be provided on West Greenville Road, approximately 300 feet, 50 feet north of Orchard, the Orchard Gate access. It consists of a boulevard-type design with 16-foot entry and exit lanes with a center median divider. West Greenville Road in the project area, it's classified as an urban major collector. It's approximately 28 feet wide with 12-foot travel lanes and two-foot shoulders. There are no curbing and sidewalks provided in the immediate area, it's posted at 35 miles per hour. Based on the count data that we did obtain, that section of road services approximately 2,600 vehicles per day. The morning peak occurs between 7:00 and 8:00 a.m., approximately 200 vehicles per hour, and in the PM, between 4:30 and 5:30, 260 vehicles per hour. Compared this to data that I had worked on projects over 15 years ago in this area, and that, those volumes are still consistent with volumes from over 20 years ago. Looking at the reference, in reference to safety, looking at the site access road location, looking for safe stopping site distances reviewed according to ASHTO guidelines, based on the geometry of the road, site distances are over 600 feet each direction, and those well exceed the requirement for the posted speed limit of 250, 200 feet based on a posted speed limit and 385 feet for actual travel speeds, because we measured the actual travel speeds of approximately 47 miles per hour, which is much higher than the posted. Briefly going over future conditions, project of this type and size would generate during the morning peak hour roughly 36 vehicle trips total, that would be 11 entering and 25 exiting during the PM, it would be 42 total trips, 24 entering and 18 exiting. We then assessed, assigned those vehicles to our site driveway in reference to turning along with the existing and projected future conditions at the site driveway and at the Smith Street intersection. Our driveway would operate at a good level service A, typically you'd have one car on the site access road waiting to turn. The existing Smith Street four-way intersection operates at a level service B, and that would continue in the future with the, with that amount of traffic added to it. In conclusion, excuse me, based upon our review of all the data and information collected, including our analysis of future conditions, we believe that adequate and safe access can be provided to the property. Additionally, the town had a third-party peer reviewer to determine our conformance with engineering standards and guidelines and found out the report to be consistent and that they agreed with the findings and conclusions of our study. And finally, the project also received approval from the Rhode Island Transportation last fall, because it's a state highway requirement review for approval of the access, so that was obtained back in, in November. So we have approval from the state DOT, we have a third-party reviewer agreeing with the conclusions and findings of our study.
Have any questions? Questions?
Yes. It's stated here on page four, says BAI recommends that the northbound approach of West Greenville Road, at the intersection of West Greenville Road, Snake Hill Road and Smith Avenue, be modeled as one lane with a channelized right turn lane.
Yes, in, in the software package, you can create different lane configurations. We had a short right turn, so doing it as a single channelized right with that radius, it results in the same level of service, it's just a clarification of what-
All right, so it doesn't-
Change anything.
Doesn't change anything.
No.
Thank you.
And, and the letter you received tonight, many of the comments were, didn't require a response, or you was just asking for clarification on the text within the report. For example, the 85th percentile speed, we referenced the 85th percentile speed, but we didn't include the, the data in the appendix, and they asked for us to put the data in the appendix just to confirm the information.
Was there any analysis on impact on Smith Avenue 116 during the peak hours?
We looked at that main intersection, which is consistent with-
Which main intersection, with 44?
No, West Greenville and Snake Hill and Smith.
Because 44 and 116, where a lot of the traffic would be fed from, it backs up quite a bit already during peak hours, was there any analysis going a little further down to see the impact?
No, we didn't feel that necessary, the reviewer, peer reviewer didn't feel it necessary, based on the volume of traffic, the, the size of this development and the amount of traffic potentially that would be generated during that peak hour to that location, probably looking at 10 vehicles in the peak hour from this, based on the numbers that we're, we're proposing.
You're anticipating only 10 vehicles from, from this development during peak hours?
If you, the, there, in the morning peak hour, there's 36 total trips, 11 entering and 25 exiting, so you distribute that on the, the network of streets, whether they're going, you know, further south on West Greenville, or west on 44 or east on 44, the numbers just don't add up to be substantial. Typically, DOT wouldn't even require a traffic study if you don't generate more than 100 trips, new trips in the peak hour, that would, that would consider affect, potentially affecting capacity.
And the sampling was done what time of year?
I believe it was multiple periods, February and March, and we used DOT seasonal factors to adjust, and we did use the factors to adjust the traffic accordingly.
Any other questions of the board members?
I read your reviews, most of them I, I agree with, but I'm just curious, which direction do you think they're going to be going out of there? They're going to be going to 44 or down Smith Street?
There are multiple directions, I don't have exact splits that we used, but we based it based on how the traffic is traveling today.
You used the figures mainly going down Smith, half Smith, half 44? How did you?
It was probably 50, 20, 20, and 10.
So the majority of it was going to go down-
Probably, yes, but you take 50% of 25, you got about 10 vehicles.
Is there a formula for which direction you would make that decision on, on doing it, or did you just decide to go Smith versus?
No, we, we look at what the traffic patterns are today, where people are coming, turning in and out of neighborhoods, I actually counted one of the, the side streets to determine where people were coming from and going to, helping, to assist in that.
I agree with that, what's going to happen, though, my opinion, I think is going to happen, is the people are going to start going 44, because Smith Street is going to be backed up so bad that they're not going to be able to, so 44 is going to be increased. An example of that is when they put in West Greenville Road going to Johnston, you know, before the 295 on ramp and off ramp, you could crawl across that street.
I designed that.
Now 44, now you can't.
But it, but it did help 44, so you just, you-
Right, but down the road is what I'm saying, some of that.
Correct.
So, but the total cars, what you're saying, is going to be split up mainly going down Smith is what you're saying. If there is a problem, do you think 44 can handle it?
10 cars, 12 cars in the peak hour, yes. You actually reduced the, the travel lanes from four to, four to two, so.
Yeah, I, I personally think that's what's going to happen, people are going to start using 44 and not Smith Street, so. It might be a relief that way, but it's going to be more of a, you know, for those people down there, because that's really quiet down there, they're not going to be, in fading land, they're going to be cutting through all of that.
Again, residential use is not a high-volume or high generator of, of traffic, it's the destinations that are, that results in the concentrations of traffic.
I read a few of your things, if you feel, that's why I was asking, which main road you thought it was going to be.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions of board members of the witness?
Mr. Mancini? Thank you, through the chair. Mr. Bannon, you testified that this project has received a round DOT permit, can you just explain that?
Yes, any property located on a state highway that requires access to, to modify the state highway requires what they call a physical alteration permit. So through that process, you have to submit design plans, they review it for safety and operations to ensure that it's designed properly and most importantly, safely.
Thank you.
So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to call my next witness, which is Joe Lombardo, who presented the, the fiscal impact study, and we had some discussion on that at the last hearing, and the board had some questions about the fiscal analysis and the impact, so Mr. Lombardo is here to present his report and to answer any questions or concerns the board has, so with that, I'll ask him to be-
If you could state your name, where you're with, and I'll swear you were in that. If you could state your name, where you're with, and I'll swear you in after.
Okay. My name is Joseph Lombardo. I'm president of JDL Enterprises with home offices in Westerly, Rhode Island.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members of the board. It's nice to see some familiar faces here this evening and on the table over here. I did prepare this fiscal report. It was a checklist item back for master plan. And I'm just gonna give you a quick synopsis on how I arrived at some of the numbers that I have. I'll preface that by making a little, a little statement that, understand that this is a checklist item that's required. It is an estimate and it's information. It gives the board and the town an idea what to expect from any type of development. In this case, it's a residential development. It's a particular type of residential development with two-bedroom and three-bedroom condominiums. So those factors, bedroom count and type of housing unit, affect the population and it also affects the number of school-aged children. I've been doing these reports for a number of years. I've been tabulating results over the years to try to arrive at what we call a multiplier, or how many people per unit based on that type of unit being built. There's some newer information that I was able to get from projects in Rhode Island that are more current, and you'll see that reflected in the appendix that I added to again, try to see what the newer trend is, what types of numbers are being generated. There's a tremendous amount of multifamily development going on in Rhode Island right now, apartments and condominiums. And so we were able to look at those projects and get some real numbers that are very, much more current. The second thing that I use is data from the census and from Housing Works RI. And I also, also use obviously budgetary figures from your town through budget to look at municipal expenses and educational expenses. So you'll see at the beginning of the report how I establish what I call the multipliers, the per person or the per person multipliers. We take a look at your municipal budget and divide that by your population. We take a look at the number of school, children enrolled in your school and divide the education budget by that number, and that's the net number that it costs for minus state aid to education is the actual number that Towne Smithfield has to contribute to the school department. And we establish those numbers. We then, excuse me, look at the different, again, the different types of housing units, the two-bedroom units and the three-bedroom units. They have different multipliers and they're completely different. The two-bedroom units, I use the multiplier of ten students per hundred units. And you'll see all through my appendix how, where I arrived that number at from. And then I use the number of sixty school-aged children per unit, per hundred units under three-bedroom units. And I will, I will make one comment on that. Most of that information is from single-family home, three- and four-bedroom homes where you would more than likely expect to find families with children. These are three-bedroom condominiums. And while they obviously can accommodate school-aged children or families with children, they may or may not be the choice of an individual family wishing to locate there. We can't really quantify that, and we can't limit that. We can't expect to know precisely. So I use the book conservative number, saying sixty per hundred school-aged children as if these were three-bedroom, single-family homes. When we use those multipliers by these, looking at the numbers, I've estimated a total of twenty-six school-aged children to be located here. That's all the development. The next part of that, and again, the second part of that number is a population of a hundred and seventy-four individuals. So those are the, the new residents that would be living in this project, including the school-aged children. We then take a look at what does it cost? So if I have a population, I multiply that by the multiplier for municipal expenses, the twenty-six school-aged children times the, the net cost of education per student, and I arrive at a total of five-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand. That's the total expenses for the development. Again, it's an estimate based on the population in your current budget. Based on information that the applicant provided as far as what they expect these units to sell for, I have those broken down by the low and moderate income at a hundred-and-twenty percent and market rate for both the two-bedroom units and the three-bedroom units. Looking at those with your current tax rate, we're looking at generating about three-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand dollars to the community and property taxes alone. So if we compare the two numbers, the five-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand in municipal expenses, including education, and raising three-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand in revenue, we see a deficit of a hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand. Now, I will point out, you are adding considerable number of low and moderate income housing units. And Mr. Prametal will, will discuss that in more detail. And that is helping you trying to achieve your ten percent of the goal from the state of Rhode Island. The last number I found was that you were at five-point-four-four percent. So there's work to be done. And every time there's a project like this, there is opportunity to make some progress on that. So with that, I will try to answer any questions that you may have and understand, you know, again, it's, it's an estimate for your use and, and information. Whatever questions you may have, be happy to answer.
I got a question. I don't know if you can answer or the town solicitor can answer.
Sure.
The LMI houses, they're locked in, say if they go, I'm just using a number, for four-hundred thousand.
Wait, I'm sorry, which, what's the, which, which houses?
LMI houses.
Yeah, those are showing in at, the numbers that I had, at a hundred-and-twenty percent was three-twenty-five of the two-bedroom and three-thirty-four of the three-bedroom.
Now, does that rate stay for the eternity of that LMI? In other words, I know from my understanding, LMI's, they can't be sold for a profit, but can they be taxed at a higher rate? In other words, if the value of that property goes up to six-hundred thousand that they bought for three, are they locked in being taxed at the three? Or are they gonna pay the tax on the six? Because if they don't, then we're gonna lose revenue.
Well, I'm not, I'm not a tax assessor, but I can tell you what.
That's what my question was.
What happens is, and they can certainly answer that in more detail, but those numbers are more or less locked in to stay low because the weight of the property is being sold to them. So it wouldn't necessarily escalate to such a high number very quickly. It may take forty years for that to happen, but maybe.
So what, so let's, let's say, does that tax, the tax rate in that area goes up twenty percent, the value of the property over there? Does that tax rate go onto that property, the LMI's? Now raises that value of that property and the taxes go up on it? Or does it stay the same? Because they, how, if they can't reset, if they can't resell the property for four-hundred thousand more than they paid for it, something like that. So I understand they're getting a deal, but so if the property value goes up to five-hundred thousand, they can't sell it for five-hundred thousand. They're gonna sell for four.
It is, it is.
So are they gonna be taxed at the five or taxed at the four?
It's deep restricted, but go ahead.
The, the property, uh, Rhode Island Housing sets that rate, and it's based on interest rates and a bunch of other numbers. And it changes with time and interest rates. And so what it's, what it's set at now, when he quoted those prices, we've seen two-bedroom units go for four-hundred thousand just up the road here, four-hundred and three thousand.
My, my question.
They fluctuate with, you know, interest rates.
Will, 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 will we be losing revenue down the road ten years from now because they won't be taxed at the full value of that property?
They'll be taxed at the full value, but they're, 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 they're limited to what they could be, you know, assessed at because that's. Your affordability is factored in in their assessment.
So eventually, but, but my point about that, for, there's something like that. So we're gonna lose money all the time on that.
Well, that's, that's the nature of affordable housing. It's, it's.
Well, I'm just trying to contradict the point that he's trying to make, that we're gonna make money.
I just was saying how much money you're going to make, not how much you're making, but how much you're going to collect.
You know, my, my point about the income that we're gonna get, we're actually gonna be losing income on the LMI's. Tax revenue.
They're, they're not market rate units, so they're going to be lower. That's the whole purpose of the affordable housing.
No, I understand it, but has anybody really realized what's going on here with this?
I guess the real question is, does your fiscal impact reflect that?
But, but for the LMI, they would have never been able to build those structures, that amount of structures, and you would have never received that, that income.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, it just seems like that's a, it's a loss. There's gonna be a, if we, if it was less LMI's there, there'd be more of a profit rate. I don't understand why there's so many LMI's that are gonna be. To me, it doesn't make any, it doesn't make any sense with the taxing on it.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Catherine.
Yes. I have a question. On page sixteen, appendix B, you've listed some of the units in town, the developments, and how many school-aged children they have. Your statistics are from two thousand and fourteen.
Right, it's, it's an older one, right.
It's very old, it's just, it's not accurate. In, in fact.
It was accurate at the time.
If, well, at that time, but not now, not today. We don't even list the low-income housing development that we have in town here right now. And I've asked our planning board to get me statistics of what's current in these developments. And I don't understand why we don't have that information.
Well, if you notice, this was actually compiled by Michael Phillips. It's, they're difficult to get these numbers from these developments unless municipality or somebody that has.
Well, the bus company.
I can't call them up and get them the numbers.
The bus company knows how many children they're dropping off at these developments.
If I call the bus company, they're definitely not giving it to me.
I've, I've sat outside one of the developments, encountered the children getting off the bus, and it's way more than any other, it's listed here in this piece of paper.
And every one of these are one in particular?
Which one?
Georgeville Village Green.
Yeah, that's, those are apartments. It's a different, it's a different animal, so. And we do have updated numbers, and, and the, the numbers are less than what is shown here.
So they're less?
I'll, I'll get them out to you. We just, we just got them back from the, from the bus company.
Because I've asked several times and haven't gotten them. I think we should be making decisions on what's actually going on in our town, not comparing us to other towns nearby or other towns in other, in other, in other state.
Well, it's just, it's just one factor in, in, in looking at them. You look at national trends, you look at regional, and you look at local, so.
To me, it's a big factor. Because you have a certain number of students, and all you need is one or two students that need special education. And that doubles the cost like, I don't know, probably around three times per student for someone that needs special education. And that's adding a cost. That's all I have to say.
Any other questions of the witness?
Thank you all so much.
Mr. Mancini, any questions of the witness?
Thank you. Chairman, my last witness is Mr. Prametal. I, I would suggest that you hear his testimony, and we can bring him back on the fifteen to address any further questions you have based on, after you've not only heard his testimony, but reviewed his report.
That's what, we kinda agreed too early, so. If you could state your name, where you're from, and then I'll swear you in, please.
Sure. It's Edward Prametal. That's P as in Paul. I, M, E, N, T, E, L. And I've been a continuous municipal planner, like you'll learn at college, like Mr. Phillips, over thirty-five years in various communities, and as today. And I started a consulting practice twenty-four years, twenty-five years ago, and my office is in Cranston, Rhode Island.
Okay, you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Go ahead.
So first of all, I'll offer an apology. I obviously was not involved in the project from the initial master plan. I know this is a vested master plan project. So I, it was my understanding that the board sought out an analysis of the comprehensive plan. So what, it, it's probably seventy-five percent of my consulting now is housing and affordable housing.
You, you don't need to apologize. It was only, the last hearing was thirty days. It was, it was a, a tight window. And both the town, the, the town and the applicant reached an agreement so that everybody could have full time to digest.
So what, what I'll do on, on Monday, I will, I'll reach out to Mr. Phillips in his office, and I'll provide a dozen folders that once again will have a hard copy of the report, the resume, and the different spreadsheet analyses. So my role here, and, and there's been a lot of good questions asked because it is an affordable housing development, it is a comprehensive permit, and there are nuances to this that are not typical of a market rate development. I mean, for example, the density bonuses that come with this so that you have market rate units to offset the ability to realize what's really required by every municipality, and that is affordable housing. So the economics are different and so forth. My role here is to just provide the board, because this board will have to make findings in regards to the statutory requirements. My role here is to address need, which I'm sure this board well understands because you're the board of authority in regards to complements. And that isn't merely just this arbitrary ten percent statutory figure. There are many communities that need much more than ten percent. But you have to have a rule, because in the old days, pre the two-thousand amendment to the statute, cities and towns were just denying projects, so they established a threshold to get to spur affordable housing. But it's really need within that ten percent, and there's a variety of need. There's rental, there's ownership, there's family, there's special needs, there's elderly, and all of those needs need to be fulfilled. The greatest need in the state of Rhode Island is a family affordable homeownership. And the reason for that is because of the expense of the construction and the associated costs, and of course, the economics of the development. It's just a reality. So when I have an opportunity to put forth an argument for affordable homeownership, it honestly makes my life a little bit easier because most of the development I'm doing, because that's what communities look for, is rentals or fifty-five-plus things that because of fiscal impacts. But the reality is, this is the dire need out there. This, in every city in town. I mean, Massachusetts under their forty-B now, they mandate that a component of the affordable housing be family because we're inverted and we're just not making the accommodations. So the first thing was a need. And what I do is I review your comprehensive plan thoroughly, looking at your housing and land use elements. But I read your entire com plan thoroughly, your services, facilities element, and so forth. And then I do a cross-analysis check as to what's been the successes in town. And a lot of that data, once again, comes from the com plan. But, but a com plan obviously is a document that gets a little dated because it's a long-term vision document of twenty to thirty years and gets updated less frequently. So I obviously rely on other statistical data like the housing fact books and other data, and that's why I do my spreadsheet analyses, to determine where you've been, how you're progressing in all these different categories, and are you meeting need? And I can tell you, very few communities have met their ten percent. Very few communities have even approached the ten percent. The majority are kind of in that middle range, like the Towne of Smithfield, because these kind of projects are very difficult. And when you're talking about a rural community, it makes it even more difficult. Why? Because obviously, to accommodate higher density, you need the infrastructure. Sewer, water, roadway infrastructure. So I always take the guidance from the local municipality before I even take on a project to say, to make a determination as to what is the objective of the community in question. The Towne of Smithfield took some really proactive steps, stands on this and made it very clear in your comprehensive plan and carried over to your zoning regulations. There are four select areas where the infrastructure exists. You want them in these areas, in these villages, because once again, that's where higher density can be accommodated. This was one of the few areas that actually is reported in the com plan and carried over from a regulatory perspective into your affordable housing statute or your zoning regs. So right away, I could make a determination that the location's appropriate. Looking at the density, I do a neighborhood analysis to see what the density's like in the area. Once again, based on the infrastructure, there are two proximate developments that are even actually on an acreage basis, even much higher density. What was of the interest there, though, was that those are much, those are older developments, so they kind of predate the affordable housing statute. So obviously, there was no need to make provisions, and that's always a problem in the community. And that's why communities now are adopting inclusionary ordinances. Every time you develop, you need to offset your contribution, or every community is always gonna go in a hole and never achieve regulatory compliance. This development here, based on the percentage of units that we're gonna be providing, will not only offset our own contribution, it'll offset the contributions of the other dense, high-density developments in the proximate area, because it is a more dense development. Communities have a tendency to try to water down the densities, and what ends up happening is you end up exhausting the land resources where you could actually accommodate greater density, and then you have the problem in the impact on the rural areas. And that's what we're trying to avoid doing. So my advice is always, those areas that are gonna accommodate the higher density, that's where you need to maximize your density to achieve not only this arbitrary ten percent, because I'll acknowledge that, but really addressing affordable housing need. So that's what my report reads. It talks about need, and it talks about appropriate allocation. That was my objective. That was my objective, in order to render an opinion of consistency with your comprehensive plan. In fact, the acreage right next to this lot was always defined as low density, your own comprehensive plan says, no, this property should be zoned medium density, we should be densifying all the acreage in this area. And that's why I felt very comfortable that there was some really proactive take on when you revise, when you revised your comprehensive plan and you did your housing element not too long ago, it was obviously worked on to understand and to push forward more density in these four select areas. And that's why I felt very comfortable in rendering an opinion of consistency with the comprehensive plan, and that this development will achieve some real growth in affordable and move that barometer forward. I, I know that you prefer to have the report in front of you so you can read and ask your questions, so maybe that'll be the next best step, is for you to regurgitate the report and see if you have any specific questions.
I, I did briefly have an opportunity to review some of the report, not in detail like I would if I had a hard copy. And I did note that you went through and analyzed the comprehensive plan, and ultimately, it's your opinion that this project is consistent with the comprehensive plan. My question to you is, as part of that review, what factors, if any, were inconsistent with this, with the comprehensive plan?
I, I know that that was a question that was raised at a previous meeting, because that was raised to me.
Yeah, my question's more particular to your analysis.
I know, but I, I didn't understand what the nature of that question is, because I don't know what was inconsistent. The area is one, is a general area that where you want to see the higher density, it's the area where you want to see the affordable housing, it's an area which has the necessary infrastructure, it's compatible with the character of the neighborhood, there's only limited areas in town left where you can accommodate this kind of density, before you start approaching into less dense areas, areas where you don't have the necessary infrastructure, because the affordable housing statute applies across the boards, which obviously, as an urban planner too, I don't want to see that. Obviously, you couldn't accommodate as great densities, but the problem is, you end up starting exhausting all your acreage. I was recently in two developments in the town of Warren, and Warren, the chairman made a comment, says, at the pace that we're going, we could end up consuming and exhausting the rest of our land resources and never meet the 10%. So that's why my, is always, that's correct. That's why we can't, if you have the acreage, they don't. The areas where you can accommodate the greater densities, that's where you need to accommodate, and this community has made a determination on this. I believe this is consistent, I didn't see any inconsistency.
That's my question. Because what you testified to was, you reviewed our comprehensive plan, obviously, you reviewed the project. Is it your testimony before this board today that you didn't find anything with this project that could be read to be inconsistent with some of the comprehensive plan?
Not at all. The, the, the infrastructure is in place, I went through your service and facilities element, I went through the open space and recreation element, I went through all these elements to see, was there other concepts in the comprehensive plan that would include either this property from being developed in this manner, or maybe there were resources outside of it that you felt this may impact? I didn't find any of those. Go ahead.
All right, yeah, well, my job was to look at it like stuff I got downloaded and I looked at it, and some of your, what you speak in here, cluster development?
Yeah.
The word cluster, I don't know, it doesn't sound appealing to me, but we won't get into that fact. Also, after you say that cluster developments are a benefit to us, because you saves open space, is a quote from you.
Yeah.
My question is, so where is the open space being saved? Next question, something like that. What you did not see in the comprehensive plan, or maybe you just missed it, is we have the right to keep the rural character of this town.
That's correct.
There is one point that you missed on the comprehensive plan that does give us denial of this property. It does not conch cheek with the criteria of that, especially being a farmland that people drive by all the time, see trees, farmland, it's known as sniffy. When you think of sniffy, you think of palm trees driving around. So I consider that part of that comprehensive plan, character, and reason for denying this property.
But that's, that's a, that's a misinterpretation of the comprehensive plan. Protecting the rural character means that the areas where you have given real consideration that need to be preserved to maintain that character, is that you carry it over to your zoning to keep that zoning classification of keeping the rural character. Areas where you lack infrastructure, areas where there's a commitment to preserving open space, there may be green corridors. These areas are the areas that the comprehensive plan directs developers based on the community where the high density affordable housing should be directed to, in order to realize that rural character and preservation of areas where you don't want to see the high density. That's why it's consistent.
I think, I think, I think we should, we should let a court decide that, in my opinion, because this is getting out of hand with this, with, you know, we've developed this area, developed another here, 85 houses over here, 65 houses over here, another 35 over here, and everybody's saying that they have the right to do it and it's not going to affect. Well, when everything is all done in three years from now, and you get your 85, and they get their 65, and this one over here, and then the 295 project gets another 85 over there, now what are we going to do? I'm not going to, what are we going to, the comprehensive plan says character of this town. I think the character of this town is being assaulted by these developments and these cluster developments. That's my opinion.
I know you may not have the report in front of you, so I'll apologize. So page 7 of 20 that carries out the future land use map, which is the ultimate document that culminates, right? So you have all these elements, each looking at their own respective component of the community, which culminates in the land use and then ultimately in a future land use map. The future land use map tells developers, tells the public, based on the aspirations of the community, where you want to see your high density and your low density and so forth, and where the affordable housing, based on that high density. And if you look at this, of all the high density and the acreage of your housing count, even from that perspective, because typically, an affordable housing development far supersedes that, that, that count. It supersedes it, because if we didn't, we could exhaust all the acreage in the community and never achieve 10%. Even in that regard, we were on point. That's what I mean about consistency. We're going in the areas which can be accommodated so that the rural character is protected and preserved.
But wouldn't you agree, but?
What's going to be protected? What's being protected?
Well, sir, based on your, then sir, based on your conclusion, every development should be denied if it isn't low density? And how will you ever achieve affordable housing? I, I'm just going based on your comments, sir. I'm going on your comments now, sir.
This town should be kept, it should be kept where it is. That's a farmland over there. This is Smithfield, it's a farmland. So I want to correct you, the comprehensive plan does say, we do have the right to deny it because of the character. You say we don't, and I say we do.
I say, I say that this community is directing people to do affordable housing in this area. That's your comprehensive plan. That's not my comprehensive plan, that's your comprehensive plan.
The issue, of course, you, you point to four different areas, geographic areas, and, but for the LMI bonus, we would not be talking about development to this scale in this area.
Correct.
And that is the issue, of whether a development to this scale in this location, based upon all the qualities of this particular development, is consistent with the comprehensive plan. As I understood, from what, what you testified to, is you reviewed our comprehensive plan in its entirety, and you could not find one factor that would lead on the other side of the issue.
That's correct.
And that's your testimony.
That is my testimony, based on the following, one, these are, these are the statutory standards that obviously you're going to be obligated to either render findings in supportive or findings against, but it's that, did I want to quote it correctly? The proposed development is consistent with local needs, is consistent with local needs.
What are you quoting from?
This is standard number one, under, under the requirements for the affordable housing standard.
That's for approval, there's also, for, there's also.
No, 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 but let me finish it, because it's, it flows into the denial. The proposed development is consistent with local needs as identified in the local comprehensive community plan, with particular emphasis on the community's affordable housing plan, and/or has satisfactorily addressed the issues where there may be inconsistencies. If, if this particular development was not guided, given direction to, because the community understands its obligation, as every city in town does, because every city in town had to author an affordable housing plan in 2004, and then since then, inherently, it's carried over in the housing element and updated. This community knows, within its comprehensive plan, that it's obligated to meet this.
Meet what?
The affordable housing statutory requirements.
I understand that. The, the real question is, is the explosive development that's generated by this bonus, i- i- if, if the bonus wasn't there, and the developer came, came in and wanted to do normal residential development based upon zoning, and there was a request or requirement for LMI, I don't think there'd be a significant problem. The issue is the explosive development in an area that was not previously zoned like that, but for the statute in terms of the LMI. We have to balance that versus the comprehensive plan. And I understand, your testimony today is that all of the factors under the comprehensive plan mitigate towards approval. We may or may not be in agreement with that.
I understand, sir. The, the initial, initial affordable housing statute was in the early 90s, and I did several projects, consulting projects under that. During that early period, from the early 90s and 2004, I took on very few projects, because there were no standards as to what the density bonuses were. Communities were getting inundated because of windfall bonuses. The communities cried to the state, so the state then engaged in its second iteration of the affordable housing statute, and mandated to all the cities and towns, affordable housing plan. You dictate to us where you want to see the affordable housing, but you're denying so many projects, we also are going to put a cap on there to make sure that you got to spur some affordable housing, that's the intent of this, and that's why the complement process was established, right? You don't meet it, we can pursue a complement in density bonuses. Because communities were crying out, you're blasting away our resources, land resources. This is, this is so above and beyond what zoning would otherwise permit. That happened from 2004 until two years ago, so then the last three years, there's been the next third iteration. Because now communities come up with affordable housing plans, tell what they want, and then there's still concerns about the underlying zoning. So what did this next iteration say? You know what? We're not going to establish now minimum thresholds of density bonuses, and then you can take it to scale up from there. That's the next iteration. Because the problem is, of course you need density bonuses, and the density bonuses are not going to reflect the zoning, especially in the rural communities. Because 90% of your land acreage is zoned residential, 70 to 80% of that is low density. So in the end, how do we mitigate the need for affordable housing, given constraints of a community?
That's the million dollar question, and that's what we're struggling with, based upon what the Rhode Island legislature has deemed appropriate in terms of these density bonuses in areas which were not zoned for that. So we got to look at this and make sure that a project like this, that is doing, that wants to do this, is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Because you, you did talk about the different standards for approval. There's also standard for denial, and one of the standards is, it's inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. I, I understand your testimony that you believe that the project is, but there's real questions on that.
Yeah, it, I, I actually carried that into my report to, and, and reference that section, because I knew that this was a concern of, of this board. All I can, all I can say, say with some strong convictions, is that every time we deny a project or water a project down, the, the, the growth or the need for affordable housing is going to be redirected into other directions that may not be as appropriate. And that's the concern that I would express to this board.
As part of your analysis, were you able to determine what the current capacity level of, of the elementary, middle school, and high school is, and what impact, if any, this, this particular development would have on that?
So, so there was.
Not, not looking at historical data, looking at what the situation is today, going into the next few years when this project is scheduled.
Right. So first of all, if I was building the foundation of a house, the first response to that foundation is, first of all, you got Rhode Island General Law. The law says that you can't single out a particular group out of a development saying, if you're going to generate that group, then we're going to deny the project. I'm just, I'm just telling the law says.
That's a general question.
Wait, wait, I'm going to get, right? The second, right, would be like, okay, let's say that is a concern. What, to what degree is that a concern? Obviously, I rely on the expertise of other field and their, people in their expertise field, like Mr. Lombardo and so forth. But I also did an analysis of the US Census data, because thankfully, the data got released finally, post-COVID. I didn't find the numbers that the board seems to be really concerned about, either on a family household size, particularly because this is a condo development, I didn't see those dire numbers. Thirdly.
We don't have any data.
Thirdly.
We don't have any data on what the existing conditions are.
This, this is out of your comprehensive plan.
No, no, what today, what, what today, what the current.
Well, then, in response to that.
Situation is today and over the next projected several years. Am I correct on that?
So, well, in response to that, then I would say, since the comprehensive plan is a long-term vision, visionary document.
That's not my question.
I, I'm going to answer this. And the community has to make a determination as to what, where the affordable housing and the density is going to go, and what the infrastructure is going to need to support that. A comprehensive plan is also typically tied to a capital budget, a capital improvements program, it's, many com plans carried into it, and that means education and all the other services. It's planning for that growth. That's why you do a build-out analysis, that's why you do an analysis of where the housing is going to go, and one of those components is education. That analysis needs to be done, it's an obligation of the community.
But it hasn't been done in terms of the impact on this particular project?
I don't know that.
No, no, from, from, you have not done that.
As to where the kids are going to go? No, I didn't, no.
Or whether the school system could support a cluster community such as this?
Once again, the comprehensive plan is.
That's not what I'm talking about.
But that's not an inconsistency.
I, I have a, a specific question. Was that done?
No, it was not done.
That, that's fine.
But it's not an inconsistency.
What does the comprehensive plan talk about, Smithfield's comprehensive plan in terms of growth? What does it say?
You, you have a build-out analysis.
No, the general, the general policy behind growth in the town. No, no, generally.
I'm, I'm, maybe I'm not understanding the nature of the question, sorry. I'm, I'm not understanding.
Well, when you come back, we'll, we'll get into that a little bit more.
Well, I don't even know how to answer, if you want, if you want to clarify, so that I can be prepared, because I'm not understanding the, the question.
It goes to whether or not a development such like this is consistent based upon the anticipated growth of the members, the, to the town, the potential impact on the school system, the potential impact on infrastructure, et cetera. There's general, within our comprehensive plan, there's general policies behind growth, and I was just wondering if you, if your analysis took that into consideration at all?
My analysis took into consideration that the comprehensive plan, being a long-term visionary document, has to anticipate the needs that come, that come with the growth in housing density. It has to. If you're, if you're directing people to meet the 10% statutory requirement, because you know what the density bonuses that result from that, and therefore, you must know the infrastructure that is required, and then the argument is going to be, but our comprehensive plan doesn't address that, we're not prepared for that, then that would be a basis for denying every affordable housing project. That would be so inappropriate.
We, we got to take each project as it is, right? And, and, and how that project is consistent or inconsistent with the comprehensive plan? When, when the comprehensive plan was put in place, are you telling me that we were aware of this particular statute as it states now with density bonuses?
Your housing element is one of the newest elements in this comprehensive plan, it's only a few years dated. So if that means it was based on new data, it had to be. It couldn't have been done on the back of a napkin. So therefore, if you're directing, if you're directing affordable housing and housing, greater housing density to these four areas, based on just a comprehensive plan, housing element that was just updated, there had to be anticipated expectations of what the growth needs were going to be and what the infrastructure.
But what type of growth? What, what type of growth? That's the issue.
Water, roadway, children in the school system, police, fire, I could go on and on, it's endless. It's endless. But those are the obligations of the municipality to prepare for that growth.
And we've got to make sure that we can handle it, correct?
If you couldn't, why direct it to this area? I don't understand. That's what I'm confused by. If this area is inappropriate for this density, why does the comprehensive plan say, this is where we want to see higher density and affordable housing growth?
What, what type of projects? Does it speak to what type of projects?
At full, at full build-out, if we were just looking at today's numbers, you're still 361 units shy. Based on the growth of this community, it's going to take you 72 years at the pace you're going. If you look at the full build-out analysis, I can go into-
That, that's a different issue. And I do appreciate that the LMI concern in that, that, you know, it's, there's an intent to meet it in the requirements, but we've got to look at each project. We, we can't just use that as the basis to say, hey, every, every project is, is good and has to be approved.
This community has concluded, here, it's comprehensive plan, these are not my numbers, that at, at full build-out, you may approach 9,726. That's what they're going to require, 973 units. That's a shortfall of 542 units. So if the comprehensive plan is concluding this, the comprehensive plan also has to prepare how you're going to meet that, build, full build-out, that growth analysis, and have the necessary infrastructure in place. That's the obligation.
Even if it's inconsistent with other portions of the comprehensive plan?
But it wouldn't be inconsistent. It wouldn't be inconsistent because the housing element, along with all the other elements, culminates in your future land use map.
You have a question?
Yes. One statement. When we were writing the comprehensive plan, and, and Mike and Catherine were there for it, we had, we, by the state, the amount of units we had left to fulfill 10%, we were required by the state to identify locations where, all these locations, I think even more, could potentially fill that number. So, but the intent was not, we wanted it to become, all those to become high density.
That's the point I was making.
And so, at the same time, we were fulfilling that responsibility of identifying land and locations that could fulfill that 10%, we were also writing to retain the rural character of the town. So the rural character of the town cannot be thrown out just because we identified locations that could fill the numbers.
That's the, that's the point.
And that was my point.
I, I read your point totally different, though.
That is my point. You understand the area that can accommodate the greater density, you know what the infrastructure is, and in so doing, you're trying to preserve all this vast area and its rural character. That is what the comprehensive plan is saying to do. Absolutely on point.
I'm not quite sure I got what you got out of it.
I don't know. I heard exactly what I had said, but I can't.
Michael?
What, and I have looked at Mr. Pimental's report, and I've looked at a lot of his reports over the years. And he did, he did a, a good job of, of looking at, but I, I think he omitted an area that I think is very important, namely, and he, and he pointed out the future land use map, which is shown here, and shows our growth overlay ordinance, our zone up in the 116-7 corridor. It's about 966 acres of land. And it's, it has density provisions of up to 20 units per acre in that zone. And that's where we, we know we have infrastructure, we have transportation, and that's where we want growth to go. And, and his report points out growth centers in here, and we have done that. We have identified where we want this growth to go, and it is not here on the extreme western part of the town, budding the most, one of the most rural communities in the state. It is in this growth center.
It's what we're trying to save. It's what we're trying to save. That's what we're, that area is the area we're trying to save, the other area to go.
In, in generally, in comprehensive plans, there, I don't know how many actions and policies are in here, but there's internal inconsistencies throughout these, there's things that point, you know?
Both ways.
Both ways.
And we've got to, we've got to balance those in this particular case.
Yeah, and I think the, the law, you know, you say tide goes to the runner. The tide goes to LMI housing in this instance. I mean, but, I mean, it, in general, I understand where the board is coming from, that we, we want to steer these things to, you know, areas that can best handle it. You know, this, this development is, you know, it's owned already right now. It's on the periphery of a village. It is proximate to, to transportation. We don't have sidewalks to get you to 44 where the bus route is. So you could, you can nitpick all day about, you know, whether it's consistent or not, but ultimately, I guess it's the board's decision, you know, whether it is. I mean, and you could, you could point to any number of inconsistencies in here as well. And we pointed to a few of them, the, you know, you know, the fact that this is, you know, it's a rural community in this part of the town for the most part. Yes, there are, there are condo developments abutting it, but there's also orchards and farms. So it's, it, it's an unenviable position that you're in, having to make this decision, but it's, I, I just wanted to bring it to, you know, to point about the growth center, because we have made a concerted effort to, and we have made great progress. We've approved, I don't know what the number is, probably 700 or 800 comp permit units over the years that I've been here. In, in the ego zone alone, we have over 600 units that are being considered, 85 of them are going, are on the agenda tonight in the growth center. We've approved projects in the growth center, so we've been steering growth in that direction. And that's where it should be going.
Right. I also want to point out, too, that other towns right now, as a matter of fact, I looked up a couple of cases, Navarre Gansit for one, fighting the same things what I'm fighting for, they're in appeals court right now over it. So, well, my point is that other towns are getting inundated with this problem, too. It's not just this board.
Navarre Gansit, Navarre Gansit lost that appeals. I know, I was, I was the consultant.
February 11, 2025, it's going to appeals.
No, they, they lost in Superior Court.
They, they lost.
Right. They lost at the Shab, well, I-
You're appealing it.
I can tell you, all right, I, I got, I know other information, but you'll see soon. But, but that's okay. That, that development is being resolved right now as we talk.
Well, my point about the whole, they lost the lower court, but they asked-
No, they never lost at the lower court.
The Shab court.
They won at Shab and they won in Superior Court.
My point about there's other towns that have the same concerns.
Absolutely. That is, I agree with that. This area, right, besides being one of the villages in the areas, is an area in transition. At one time, this whole area was classified low density. The developments below it now, to coincide with the developments that ultimately were approved and developed are now high density. The property, right adjacent to this property, huge swath, right now, is zoned low density as it occurs. You know what your future land use map says, it's right abutting us? It should be reclassified to a greater density. That's what your future land, this is an area in transition. It's an area that has the infrastructure, and that's why your comprehensive plan talked about it being one of the appropriate, not only the comp plan, but it was carried over into your zoning rights. So when I'm looking at this, and I'm relying on a community to tell me, is this an appropriate locale? Does Canada accommodate from an infrastructure perspective? It's the direction that I'm relying on the community to tell me, and then so that I can tell the client, yeah, I feel comfortable, and rendering an opinion of consistency.
Thank you. Any further questions until we meet again? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll reserve till our next meeting. And at this point, unless the board has any other questions, I don't have anyone else to present, so I'll just reserve till the 15th.
Catherine?
I do have a question. Back in the March meeting, I had requested to see a copy of the floor plan of the two and three-bedroom houses, and it was supposed to be provided at the next planning board meeting, which is today. Do you have floor plans?
I don't believe we have the floor plans.
Could you get them to us?
Any other questions?
Last, that reminds me, too, I had asked him to get me a report on the levy, the condition that it is in.
On a report of the dam?
On the dam.
And, and you wanted to know how many beavers are in the dam? What, I don't understand the, what do you mean?
Is it safe?
Oh, is the dam safe?
Was that, was that smart ass on that one?
Okay. Well, at the next meeting, we'll see what the issue is.
I don't understand.
I don't see any questions.
This was a little fresh to me on that one.
So just, just so the-
Why do I mean trees are growing in it?
No, 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 I'm sorry. It's just so unclear.
I don't take, you know, a lot of people you can push around in life.
I'm not pushing anybody around. I'm not pushing, you said I'm doing my job, I'm doing your job.
Yeah, all right, all right.
I'm not, I'm not pushing anybody around. I'm just wanting to make clear so I understand.
Gentlemen, gentlemen, I think the request for, at the last hearing was for a study on the dam, make sure it was, if, I think that was indicated that was going to be provided. If you could do so for the-
I'll, I'll look into it, but I honestly-
It's up to you whether you want it or not.
We'll see if we can provide a study with respect to the dam. I'm not sure if that's feasible.
We want to take a 10, five-minute recess? We want to open public hearing? Unless it's-
You're going to continue the public hearing on this or next?
So, okay. I just wanted to make sure I didn't do something wrong and not have the public speak when they were supposed to. All right, so then we'll, we'll continue.
Continue to the 15th.
So in terms of the public hearing on this matter, it will be continued to the next hearing, which is-
May 15th.
May 15th. Please treat today as notice for that. Is that not appropriate right now? Oh, you'll be able to speak, no doubt. Don't have to open it up?
No, you haven't made a motion to continue it yet, so the public hearing is still open.
Well, what's the intent to?
If you want to let him to speak on certain issues that were raised tonight.
Okay, well, we'll allow a limited public comment.
Just on the issues that were raised tonight, then at the next meeting.
Okay. Please come forward, state your name, I'll swear you in.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Tom. Matthew Faye, Rev. 247 Old County Road. F A G U D, he's standing in the last.
Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do, sir.
Okay.
Can you speak up?
I'll use the microphone. All due respect, you guys are doing a great job. The Beaver comment.
Well, that's, that's-
Nope, I know, neither here nor there.
That's not appropriate for, for what we're talking about right now.
But you don't see that dam up on the slide up there. The backside of that berm, I think they're talking about whether it's an ethan berm or a dam, is part of the other dam, the lower side of Waterman Lake. The water flows under West Greenville Road. It's West Greenville Road, it's not West Greenwich Road, it's been referred to West Greenwich Road for the past two weeks, past three meetings, it's West Greenville Road. The traffic study, they consulted with the Smithfield Police Department. The four-way intersection, three-quarters of it is the town of Gloucester. The town line is diagonally through. Gloucester's on the right-hand side of West Greenville Road if you're going south towards Cituare. Gloucester town line goes all the way down to the Verizon Bank Building, it's diagonally through. Majority of those accidents are in the town of Gloucester. It's usually a mutual aid response by the both police departments, if not one handles. It's also a mutual aid for both the fire departments. I'm not sure if they checked with the Harmony Fire Department to see what type of accidents do occur there, what type of injuries. The lack of sidewalks, again, we keep talking about that. If you walk towards 44 to go to the bus stop, which is out on 44, across from the entrance to the Waterman Lake community, if you did walk out of that new development that way, certain times of the year, you'd be walking across a flooded section of West Greenville Road. West Greenville Road is also unlit, very, very low on lighting. Majority of that traffic in the morning goes through the traffic from Smith Ave into Gloucester. Probably 90% of it is teachers and work staff that's going up to the high schools and the middle schools. The other part of the traffic comes from Gloucester, down Smith Avenue, backing up Smith Avenue, because the amount of residents coming out of Gloucester going to work, 295 points south. I don't think many are going to take a left out there and go to the West Greenville Road to the Snake Hill Road intersection. I think, again, they're going to go out to Route 44, they're going to take a right, and they're going to go eastbound, all points south. The city of Providence, you can go on 295 and go to Boston. We keep talking about working force houses. Again, infrastructure, no water, no sewage. They're going to put it in, they're going to tie into the existing structure. Is it going to be able to take it? Is it going to be able to take the extra sewage effluent, the flows? We talked about people, if they were to tie in and then something was to happen, these are points that need to be considered. The accident data, I, I think the traffic study lacks more vehicles than what he says. And as far as the power lines that go through the potty, I think we asked, we asked about that, we brought that up. Is there a right-of-way in there? If there was to be, Rhode Island Energy does inspections routinely. I don't know if they have a right-of-way. Did they talk to Rhode Island Energy? That feeds a substation on Bourne Street, which is a very important part of the town of Gloucester. When that trips there, it trips power all in that area over there. So that's something else I would request that be looked at. The traffic that does go out to Route 44 and goes eastbound in the mornings, backed up almost to West Greenville Road up until 8:30, quarter to 9:00. A lot of that's to do with sun glare, a lot of it's to do with the businesses, you've got Dunkin' Donuts falling in and out of there, so this is additional traffic that's going to go that way. And as far as traffic coming in and out of there, maybe three or four cars per hour or whatever it is, if you do have children living there, and they are going to the high school, they drive to school, they come home from school, they go back out to sports after hours, they go out to socializing events, you're going to see the traffic double on that roadway. There aren't sidewalks. If people were going to walk up to the corner of tonight's farm to go for breakfast, there's no sidewalks. If they're going to take a left and go get donuts, cited donuts out there, the orchard stand on the left, it'll be the same thing, there's no sidewalks. So now you're going to increase traffic. They are forcing these things down our throats. I appreciate the work that you're, you're handling up here. And again, a hemp farm, it was a hemp farm, that was the last that it was, a hemp farm slash cannabis. Similar fertilizers for hemp and cannabis. If you're running a cannabis factory, usually you're in a mask and you're gowned up when you're spraying your chemicals on that stuff. Afids like to attack hemp and cannabis. But cannabis can also be used to remediate land. Sometimes it's planted to pull hard metals out of the ground. And the opposite side of that, I think if you look at studies, phosphorus and nitrogens are used to fertilize those plants. Sometimes magnesium, mag, magnate, whatever they call it. So goes back to what Charlie's saying. But that was a hemp farm, the people in the neighborhood could smell it because it was a hemp farm. And if you look at some of the Google Earth pictures, you'll see that, but you also see where they put up fencing, they try to keep the deer from going into the fields. Outside of that, I just ask that maybe they do a little bit more legwork on some of their planning, traffic study. And as far as the infrastructure, it's not there. Why don't they just build 28 wells on the property in a big septic system, instead of tying into the existing infrastructure in the town? Because eventually, as we know, we've had water main breaks on Smith Avenue, again, is the extra surge in the water and the water usage going to cause a demand on it, or the infrastructure system, or you're going to have to put a pump system in somewhere because now maybe the water use is up? I haven't heard anybody talk about that, that the water pressure is going to be adequate. So I'll leave my thoughts at that tonight, and thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to continue this hearing with continuing the clock as well?
Yes, a motion to continue the public hearing and the decision for next.
And continue, the clock continues.
And the clock continues.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? All not in favor? The ayes have it. We want to take a five-minute recess. All in favor? All not in favor? The ayes have it. We want to take a five-minute recess.
I could, I, I couldn't believe that he tried to say what you said was consistent with what he was saying. You, you were, you were backing up what I was saying?
Yes.
It, it, it can't, one of the reasons for denial is being inconsistent.
Anthony, you ready? You ready? You ready? Okay, the next matter this evening is twenty-five Levi Lane, ID twenty-five oh six, public hearing. State your name, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'll go to Harjin for the applicant. Previously at the March twentieth hearing, Mr. Boyd made a suggestion which was approved for a view on March twenty-ninth. He had concerns based upon photographs which he thought reflected the situation of the property. On the twenty-ninth, he had an opportunity along with several other members of the board to go down and have a view of the property, have a, get a good perspective. At that point in time, our engineer was present and one of the discussions that we had was the stormwater mitigation. What's before the board is a special use variance that we're seeking so that we could operate a construction storage for equipment and materials. There presently is a business being operated there that conforms with the zoning ordinances, and that's A-Star Oil. It's an accessory use to the office that's there. The relief we're seeking is the special use and as well as the front setback as well as a side setback. And there was a discussion at the view that the building that we're seeking the front setback from, in my opinion, is already grandfathered in, but because we have this application before the board, we just want to do a global resolution to make sure that we don't have any problems down, down the road. Twenty-five Levi Lane is direct access to forty-four. It's an existing road. The proposed use does not add to any additional pressures to the infrastructure. The buildings that are there have already been approved by the fire department. They meet all fire life safety. And basically, the only thing that we were waiting for, and I represented that we were going to be acquiring the adjoining parcel so that we could submit the stormwater mitigation plan. And my application reflected that, that whatever the board decides, that it would be subject to ultimately the approval of DEM with the stormwater. We were prepared to close two weeks ago. We were contacted by the sellers on the abutting property, which is Global Signal. And interestingly enough, one of the questions that, and concerns that Mr. Boyd had was where is the boundary here? Where are we at? And Global Signal says that based on the legal description that they have, they're even, they're not even certain where the boundary is. So they're having the property surveyed so that we know exactly where the boundary is and what we're acquiring. I would submit that based on the special use permit requirements, this is a project that complies with the comprehensive plan. It adds to the character. It doesn't detract from where the location is. This is well-suited. It's hidden behind a plaza that's on forty-four adjacent to the Smithfield Commons. The vehicles can gain access to forty-four and go about, you know, doing their business. And one of the concerns that Mr. Boyd had was would we be storing any fuels for the oil heating business? That is not what they're, they do. Just like Vol Oil and every other oil companies that are in town, they go to the depot, pick up the fuel, deliver it to the customers, and then they come back empty. So there is no petroleum products that are going to be stored on there. And, and the major concern and one that we want to address is where we're going to put the stormwater mitigation. Based on that, I would submit that the application can either be decided upon tonight or at the discretion of the board. It can be continued down for, I would suggest maybe not the next hearing date because we're being told that the survey should be done by the early, early part of May. So we won't be able to close and we won't be able to present the water mitigation plan, which I think would be very helpful ultimately in any decisions that the board makes.
Is that your suggestion that we can continue the matter until?
If, if that is something that really is pertinent for the board to take a look at, then that's what I'm suggesting so that you can make an informed decision.
What's the consensus of the board? Would, would they like that information prior to rolling?
Yes, I would. Yes.
Okay. Any issues with the clock with this?
No.
No.
Okay. So is it June twenty-sixth? Is that the?
Yes.
June, okay. Do we have a, a motion? Of course you can. I'm sorry.
Could you please give this board just a quick update where, where you are with DEM, what you need to submit for permitting? What's going on in that aspect of this development, given the wetlands?
I, I mean, it was clearly pointed out to us during the field trip, the issues with the drainage, but how are you sitting with DEM?
We've had communications with DEM and they've come back with comments specifically with the footprint as we know it right now in the back end of the parcel, if you're facing the parcel from Levi Lane. And based on what, what they've indicated, it would be very, very difficult to get the stormwater drainage because of the way the parcel cuts. And that is one of the considerations that we've then said, if we acquire this other parcel and present it here and put the stormwater drainage controls in this location, would that be more feasible? And the informal response is by the land present the, present the stormwater. So we're, we're sort of caught in a catch-22.
You are still, so, so to speak, you are kind of still rolling dice with the project going forward in a way.
I, I, I don't believe so. I think the property is going to be acquired. We just want to make sure, more so, the seller wants to make sure that we're getting what we're getting and we know where the boundaries are. But once we do acquire that parcel, talking to my engineer, his, his representation is that that's going to be more feasible, that DEM is going to approve the stormwater in that location.
You're pretty confident that this business can operate the way it's laid out going forward with DEM and all the problems that are associated with that?
With the stormwater.
With the stormwater, yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Is it, you're concerned about at this point the survey of the property? To find out exactly, when I say exactly what is being sold to you and what you're acquiring?
Correct.
And is that survey going to play into the area where the stormwater has been referenced, is it going to go?
It will. In, in fact, will confirm that what we think we're acquiring is in there. Unfortunately, the meets and bounds description for the parcel we're acquiring, Global Signal, when it was acquired, it was from foreclosure. There were not appropriate Class One surveys that were used to generate the meets and bounds descriptions. And then we provided with my title search and my title commitment, the old legal descriptions. Based upon that, Global Signal, the seller felt uncomfortable conveying in a warranty deed what they weren't certain about.
And the survey is going to confirm exactly what you're buying and what is being sold?
Correct. Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Charlie?
Yeah, question. Does the survey have anything to do with who's going to be responsible for the fines?
We're responsible for the fines.
No matter where that survey line is?
The only fine that was assessed was for the temporary Quonset hut that had been moved, which you observed. That was, the zoning violation was that, that was on the abutting property owner's lane. That's been resolved.
So there's no, no matter what happens with the survey, there's no more legal problems about?
No.
Any other questions?
Do you want to make a motion to continue this matter to June twenty-sixth meeting?
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? All not in favor? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Turning to new business, five-twenty, five-forty, Douglas Pike, forty-six, forty-eight Ridge Road, ID two oh five, public hearing.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name's Tim Kane. I'm an attorney licensed to practice law in the state of Rhode Island. And I have an office at six-twenty-seven Putnam Pike in Smithfield. And it's been a long night for you, and I think I have something positive, I would hope, on this application. So, Mr. Casali will run you through the plan quite excellently, as he, excellently as he always does. I represent the various entities that own the four lots that are before you and the properties on Douglas Pike. And I must say, as a lifelong Smithfield resident, the properties are impeccably maintained. It's as nice as anything you'll find anywhere. And when you drive by, it catches your eye. The fields, the stone walls, the buildings definitely add to your sense of place in Smithfield when you drive up Douglas Pike. So it's an eye-opener. Douglas Pike, so it's an eye-opener. If you've had the opportunity to review the town planner's memo and Mr. Casali's submission, they very accurately describe what's before the board. And it's, it's a total of four lots right now. And we're not looking for any additional lots being created. There's no further development proposed at this time. And the reason this application is before you is proposal B is short on frontage, so we're asking for variance on that. And otherwise, it wouldn't go before you, it would go before the town planner. And basically has, Mr. Casali will explain it's a trade-off. My clients are giving up a one-point-one-and-a-half acre vacant buildable lot on Ridge Road. That's going to be combined with the lot right next to it. And they're creating a one-point-seven acre lot, which would be accessed via Route Seven. And that lot would have an existing single-family dwelling on it. So each parcel as created would have its own structure on it. It kind of evens out the use of the land, and it's more in concert with what exists out there. So it's, it's no development. We're not looking for additional lots. We're just looking to reconfigure lot lines. And Mr. Casali will walk you through the plan. And Mr. Carlo Jerry, who is the patriarch of the family that owns and the entities that owns all those properties, he's here tonight if you have any questions from him. So, Mr. Casali?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board. Just for the record, Joe Casali, professional engineer, offices at three hundred Post Road in Warwick.
Shall I tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing about the truth?
I do. I agree, it has been a long night for all of you, Mr. Chairman. I promise to be brief. Quick PowerPoint presentation, I think the picture will bring this into focus. Again, this is just four lots turning into four lots. It's not an administrative subdivision because we're asking for a dimensional variance on one of the lots, bringing it to a, to a minor subdivision. I'm sure you all have driven by this piece, south of two ninety-five, in between Douglas and Ridge, south of Lime Rock is the subject parcel. That's all four of them, assesses plat forty-five, lots six, seven, one thirty-eight, and one thirty-eight B. When you get closer, that is lot six. That's the biggest piece. That's the Roots Heaven Farm as we know it, and also has that Bochi Clubhouse, five-twenty, Douglas Pike. There's also a one-story bungalow that's on that piece that you'll see we want to frame. There's also a barn structure. And then there's the second lot, forty-five, seven. That's five-forty, Douglas Pike. That's where the applicant currently has his office. And as Attorney Kane said, there are two more pieces, lot one thirty-eight, which houses a single-family home for the applicant's daughter. And then the piece next door, one thirty-eight B, has all of the, the tennis court, and it's really been merged into one large estate. So in terms of zoning, it is correct in that everything is in the R-medium zone except for lot seven, which is in your commercial zone, using it under the commercial use of office. It's the applicant's desire to remove and extinguish these interior property lines. And then we'll be able to create back the first parcel, which will just house the applicant's office, that's five-forty, Douglas Pike. We'll have the second piece that will have the bungalow with it. The third piece will frame the existing single-family home known as forty-six Ridge Road. And then the last piece will be the barn, the Bochi Court, and the remainder of the, of the farm. The reason this jumps up to a minor, we want to have access from Douglas Pike to the existing structure. We don't meet the required frontage in the R-medium zone. As you know, Mr. Chairman, two hundred feet are required. Fifty is shown and requested. Proposed relief, requested relief is a hundred and fifty feet. That's it in terms of the presentation. Tim and I, and also the applicant, will be happy to answer questions of you or members of the board.
Any questions to the board members? Mr. Casali. That's going to be a rarity, Mr. Casali.
It's pretty straightforward, right? It's late in the evening.
It could be. Or it could be the project itself there, so.
Well.
Do we have a motion? Oh, it's a public hearing. We got to open this up for public comment. Eight-thirty-four, any member of the public that would like to be heard on this matter, please come forward. Not seeing any response. We will close the hearing, the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
Is there a member on this one that we have a planner or not?
Do you want another, do you have an extra copy of the memo?
All right, make a motion for the approval of five-twenty, five-forty, Douglas Pike, forty-six, forty-eight Ridge Road. Recommendation is, the planning department is of the opinion that the condition of the preliminary plan approval have been satisfied. This is the recommendation. The board accept this memo, preliminary plan submissions, and supporting documents into the record of the meeting, that the board grant requesting frontage and setback relief of a hundred and fifty feet, I believe that is, and the planning board grant preliminary plan approval of the minor subdivision.
Second. All in favor? Aye. All not in favor? The ayes have it. Next matter, residents at two ninety-five, ID twenty-five oh eight, comprehensive permit application, major land development project pre-application.
Good evening, Joe Roach, attorney for the applicant and owner. Hopefully, we can parlay that last application right into ours, but we're here on a pre-application. We're at a very, very concept level comprehensive permit application. I have the client here, I have our professional engineers. And again, we're at the concept level, wanted to get some feedback from the board, proposing eighty-six units in the, underlying zoning is highway commercial with the economic growth overlay district on top of it. There are twenty units per acre allowed by right under that overlay district. And again, we're here for proposing at a concept level eighty-six units. I will turn it over to our civil engineer to go through the concept plan.
Again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, just for the record, Joe Casali, registered professional engineer, three hundred Post Road in Warwick.
Mr. Casali, you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing about the truth?
I do. So as Attorney Rooker said, this is yet another affordable housing project. We are here on a pre-application. In all sincerity, it, we want to hear your comments, positive or negative. I think you'll find that this is a little bit different from the other applications you've seen in that the location, in my opinion, is far superior. And you'll see the mixed use as well as the layout of the building. So this is, this is in the EGO zone. So this is mixed in terms of eighty-six units. Twenty-two of them greater than the twenty-five percent required are LMI, and there's also eight flexible space units. But let me, let me show you on the, on the plan. Rocky Hill Road, again, it's in a unique location. You're looking at the northernmost point of the community. You're sandwiched in between two ninety-five, one sixteen, both a federal and a state highway, Harris Road and Rocky Hill Road. And many of you may not even know this piece still exists. It's specifically called assesses plat forty-eight, lot five, and it's thirty-four Rocky Hill Road. It's in its entirety, it's about three-point-six acres. So when I say unique characteristics, when you look at the neighbors, we have a storage facility, we have a daycare, we have camper and trailer manufacturing and sales, and then you have a federal highway. So it's pretty tucked away and not, respectably, in anyone's backyard. But when we look closer at the piece, the three-point-six acres, we've got Scott Rabidoo refreshing these wetlands. We do know that there's a small wetland edge just west of the property and east of two ninety-five. It's small enough that it'll only carry a twenty-five-foot buffer zone, but it'll also carry twenty more feet for building setback, and then that's the hundred-foot jurisdictional area. So anything in the red line is going to require an application to DEM, which, which we acknowledge. But when you look at it, this is in your highway commercial zone, and it's in your economic growth overlay district. And I don't believe we've seen many projects come before the town, certainly not residential of neighbors, of, of residential. Setbacks are a little different in the EGO district. There's a ten-foot maximum front setback, so you can't be further than ten feet from Rocky Hill Road, which we will be and respectfully ask for relief. And then the only other setback is a twenty-five-foot rear setback, nothing along the, along the sides. When you look at the density calculations and how you calculate in the EGO district, twenty-five percent of the land must be mixed-use development. So, excuse me, thirty-five percent of the land must be mixed-use development or commercial in, in nature. And so that's what you see, that purple block there is about thirty-five percent of the parcel. And the other sixty-five percent, that's allowed in the EGO district for residential use. So what the applicant is proposing, that's much easier, what the applicant is proposing in terms of the underlying density, when you take this remaining two-point-three acres, it calls for twenty units per acre in the EGO district. So that gives you a density, underlying density of about forty-six units plus the commercial use. When you're looking in terms of now this being a comprehensive permit, because there is sewer and water and all available utilities on this project, the state allows a density bonus on top of the baseline. So that'll be five units per acre, but it'll be built on just the two-point-three acres or the red block. So you have eleven more units. So in terms mathematically, fifty-seven units are allowed, fifteen of them are required to be LMI. We're proposing more of that. We're proposing in addition of the fifty-seven, eighty-six total units, twenty-two of them are LMI, and I'll show it to you better on a layout. That is the multifamily structure that we're proposing. That's all eighty-six units will be in one building, and it'll be four stories. I don't know if any of you are familiar, but this is the Meadows Development in North Smithfield. We've, you know, engaged the same architectural team, and we want to monitor it after that building. This is a two-story rendition. We're proposing a four-story. But just for our purposes tonight, for pre-application, I want you to understand the type of architecture, the gable structures that are there, the cupolas, the clock tower, and so forth. There's a lot of character to this type building. When you look at the different floors, they're all replicas of each other, but this is seventy-eight one-bedroom units and eight two-bedroom units. And so for that eighty-six total units in residential, I know we're very concerned about school-aged children. I hope the seventy-eight one-bedroom units puts the board at ease, Mr. Chairman. When you look at the one-bedroom type units, there's four different types that we can build. These are units A through D. And then the two-bedroom units, we have a couple different outlines and outliers that we can scribe in for, for two-bed units. We're also, because this being the EGO district and highway commercial, and in the spirit of mixed use, we're proposing some flex space units. There's eight of them. Those are basically garage with both man doors and overhead doors. Entrance is entirely off of Rocky Hill Road. There will be no entrance through the storage facility. In terms of drainage, we will have very conventional basins at the peripherals of the lots interconnected and ultimately making their way into nearby wetlands. Fortunate for us, we've got a twelve-inch water main running right through Rocky Hill Road that'll provide domestic and fire protection to the four-story building. We are going to require a pump station to connect into a gravity line that exists, but not until Harris Road and Rocky Hill cross over. And then in terms of permitting, obviously, tonight is our pre-app. We know we've got work to do with freshwater wetlands, with the sewer authority, with water, with fire, and then ultimately with peer review, traffic, soil erosion, and landscape. And so, but tonight starts that journey. One thing, Mr. Chairman, if I remiss, in terms of traffic, we have not engaged our traffic engineers yet, but all of you probably are aware that Rocky Hill Road, when it comes out onto one seventeen, that's a signalized intersection, so I hope that's going to be a benefit for, for our project.
What's the breakdown of one-bedroom versus two-bedroom?
So it's going to be seventy, seventy-eight and eight for eighty-six. So seventy-eight one-bed units, eight two-bedroom units, for a total of eighty-six units, for a total of ninety-four bedrooms.
Any questions to the board members? Beginning, we'll begin with this side first.
So I'm looking at the memo dated April eleventh. And I just would like to go through some of these numbers here. Three-point-six acres of land total.
Yes.
Land available for residential development calculated at sixty-five percent. That's if you follow our economic growth overlay.
That's right.
Thirty-five percent mixed use, very familiar with those figures. As such, the land available for residential development is calculated at two-point-three-four Twenty acres per zone, forty-six units. So then we drop down to the next paragraph. It says, the bonus density calculation requires that wetland buffers be removed from area calculations. This results in a buildable area of three-point-three acres. As such, additional sixteen units. So what exactly is the total area that we're basing this calculation for our total residential units?
So we actually updated this presentation from that memo to catch the, the difference. So you're, you picked up exactly what we had all talked about before we presented this. So that two-point-three-four used in the baseline yield is now carried over for the density bonus.
You hit the heart of my question.
Yes, I knew exactly where you were going because I did the same thing.
Residential and, and the LMI lore talks residential, not, even though there's talk of mixed use now.
Right.
But it's strictly based on residential.
Right. And I think if, if we weren't proposing, we're trying to stay in the spirit of the overlay zone, and we were just, you know, seeking relief from that thirty-five percent, then we'd use the whole site, but because we aren't, we're using that two-point-three-four.
Right, you could, you could trump our ego.
Right.
Yeah, so, okay, gotcha.
Yes.
All right, thank you very much, counsel.
Absolutely.
Okay, other questions?
Other question. This is for Mike. Would this be the tallest residential development in town at four floors?
The EGO zone does allow up to four stories in that zone. So yeah, it would be within, within the zoning ordinance of the EGO.
We preliminarily checked because thinking of being in an FAA flight path, I don't believe that we are within their flight path to be a four-story.
That was my next question.
Just missed it. And I believe that there are taller buildings such as the new Bryant dorm and so forth and so on. But it's something we need to ask firemen. But it's something we need to ask firemen.
I have another question. If, just if, if we knocked off the fourth floor, how many units would that leave?
So you're in the nominal of 26, so you'd be down to about 63. Or 23, you'd be down to 63 from 86. So each floor that we're showing, there are other derivatives that we could do. We could enlarge some of those units, you know, in terms of that floor. But if you're talking floor by floor, it's about 23 units.
Okay, that's it.
Okay, going around. Charlie?
My question is, only thing, Rocky Hill Road going into there, how wide is that road?
I didn't measure it, being driven up there a few times. My guess, it's 18 to 22 in spots.
I plowed it a couple, it's very narrow there.
Yeah. My guess is the chief is going to require some improvements to Rocky Hill. We think that cul-de-sac is inferior, but the design will allow them to turn around within the parcel.
Will those walls have to be moved over there?
We hope that they won't. I don't know enough yet until I get better topography.
Because if that, that could be a problem with the walls.
It could be an expense, absolutely.
Because if it's going to be mixed use, what kind of mixed use do you anticipate?
Well, the garages, so you'd have the eight flex space units. So that would be a commercial use in, that would mix with the residential use.
Do you think that road can handle that kind of traffic?
I do. When you're talking about the number of units, one car per day in the peak hour, DOT may not even require a traffic study if it's less than 100 trips per day in the peak hour. But we'll flush some of that out. I'm very optimistic with the traffic signal at Rocky Hill Road and 116. It's a far better, you know, far better situation.
Yeah, she said it's a very quiet, the people around there are not going to be too happy.
Well, the thing is, and if I may, I don't mean to be argumentative, Charlie, quiet is relative in terms of the ambient noise sound is going to be 295. And there's not many residents around there, which we hope is a benefit. Because we've been through this, you all were here for the dog kennel and about the noise there, right? And the ambient sound was really seven, it's surprising.
Basically, what kind of lighting you're going to have on there, like in the parking lots?
Yeah, you're going to have wall packs on the buildings, and you'll have stanchion lights in the parking lots. You know, we used to fight over the size of the stanchions, 20-foot, 30-foot, put more lower ones than less higher ones. But with today's generation of light, with the DocSky lighting and the LED lighting, I don't think that'll be an issue. We'll have a photometric plan next time.
Yeah, because I'd make, you know, people around here feel safer if the lighting is not quite as intense around them, you know.
Absolutely.
It's the only thing I would worry about, the lighting.
Lighting and noise.
Questions?
Maybe I missed, I didn't see it. Do you have a potential, dimensions or height of the flex buildings?
I think they would be conventionally probably around 26, 30 feet, like you see in town, you know, like you see on Cedar Swamp Road next to Thirsty Beaver, I would envision something of that nature.
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah, you know, separate units that you could take multiple ones if you wanted to, overhead door, man door, similar to the ones that was proposed in the other EGO one on 116 in Maori, Ringland and Company. I think you'll see something very similar to that.
Okay, and that's one of my comments. It is good to see something being done in the EGO zone, which was the way it was intended.
That's what it was intended for.
And it does seem to be a perfect spot, too. I mean, this seemed to match well.
When have you ever seen an application where the baseline density is actually more than what the state will give you with the comprehensive plan? And that's a combination of the zone wherein and the small size piece.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Michael?
Oh, I'm sorry, Joe, you have a question?
Yes, is there any thought to putting any sound barrier along the backside of the property that's closest to 295?
We haven't done our sound study yet. That may be something we need to do just to protect our own residents. Being the height of the building, I'm apprehensive at how well it may or may not work because of that fourth story. We have a very similar project from the same architectural group that is in East Greenwich on a railway. And with the fourth stories, the attenuation just would get to.
Would you be able to, like residents at Lime Rock, do the insulation in the special windows and doors that?
That's the way to do it, is we'd have to over-insulate. Same with the dog kennel, we'd have to have the attenuation through the architecture because I don't think the external purposes would do it.
Right.
So back to the airport, this doesn't fall in B or C, does it?
No.
That's great. That's really good news. And the last thing I want to say is this certainly would improve the view shed from 295 for that area. Way to go.
Any further questions?
What about density? I know Catherine expressed some reservations. How does the board feel, if I may ask, Mr. Chairman directly, about the density? We feel it was appropriate based, not on the yield calculations, but based on layout and how the engineering worked. But I'm just, while we're here, last minute or two, just curious if there are any comments.
Okay, that's fair.
You know, three levels is much easier.
Yeah.
Four levels, maybe, maybe not. We got to see more information on it. But this project is in a place where it should be. It's primarily one bedroom. A lot of the intent behind LMI is not significant red flags at a preliminary stage.
Right, that's how we feel. You know, there's water, there's sewer, the drainage is there, parking compartments, it's in a good area of town. You know, it seems to pass, at least at this initial stage. We don't see many effects. Yeah, and all the projects, you know, they're, it's not often you find vacant pieces, especially in this town.
How many two-bedrooms?
Eight.
Where are those children going to play?
Hopefully, there are very little, if any, school-aged children. I think I heard Joe Lembato testify before. I know you may not agree with Catherine 100%, but about 0.1 child in this town in a two-bedroom. So you're looking at maybe one. In terms of playground, we haven't scribed any of that into the landscape, but it's early. I'm sure we could put something there.
Or like a little pocket park or something.
I'm sure there's ample room for us to put something in there. It's a fair comment.
We've envisioned this kind of density in that area on a number of occasions. Heck, we've got, some of this board has designed entire villages in that area and just have had our visions tossed in the can. Time and time again. So you're not too far off the mark.
Good, we'll go out to hear that. Mr. Chairman, thank you. Appreciate it all.
Thank you. Last matter, Endurance Clean Energy, ID 2507. Major land development, pre-application.
You know, it's just a. Good evening, members of the board. I am Attorney Joe Carnavale, and I represent Endurance Clean Energy. The applicant before you, John Friend of Endurance Clean Energy, is also with me tonight to the extent that there are any questions that he may address for the board. To give you a brief overview of what the proposal is before you, it may be helpful, and I'm sorry, I don't have any multimedia with me tonight. Maybe I will prepare that for next time. But if you look at page seven of the plan set that was submitted, that will give a good overview of what we're looking at and what we're intending to move forward with here. So what we are proposing is redrawing some boundary lines and permitting a new solar development in the southern section of this parcel map, directly south of the existing solar development that my client also owns. Now, this is immediately adjacent to the Davis Liquid Superfund site. It's a brownfield. It's our suggestion that there are no other viable uses for this piece of property other than for the installation of a solar development. If any members of this board were around when my client's prior development was going through this process in 2020 and 2021, I am told that there was a suggestion by the board at that point to utilize that southern portion of this area. However, that never came to fruition because the property owner at that time did not want to part with that gravel old quarry site portion of the property. However, the current property owner does. In the package that was submitted, we have our site control documents. My client does have a lease option on that southern portion of the parcel. And along with our proposal, this would also include the creation of a new parcel, which is that specific orange section of the map on page seven of the packet. That parcel would be drawn from Assessor's Platte 50 Lot 9, 9A, and 9B. Thereafter, with the installation of the solar facility, we're essentially going to be looking for relief on the use of the parcel. And that can be contingent upon how that new parcel that we're proposing would be zoned. All of the adjoining parcels, abutting parcels, is in R200 zone. We do understand that there is no longer an allowed use of large-scale solar in an R200. So that is something we would be looking for relief on. We would also be seeking some relief on lot coverage requirements. On the current proposal, and again, this is just conceptual, we would have a new 35-acre parcel with about 14 or so acres of that parcel being used for solar. And that would include the area of the panels and the inter-row spacing, which is what goes into the lot coverage calculation for a solar development such as this. We would also be looking for some relief on the setback requirements. And that is really because, as you can see, most of this parcel is very flat. It's already cleared. As of today, it's just rocks and gravel leading up to the quarry. And as I mentioned earlier, it makes the ideal location for a solar development immediately adjacent to the Superfund site, where there is really no conceivable other use for that land. And with that, are there any questions that we can address?
Questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
Even if you use the area that's already emptied, are you going to have to take trees down?
So we already do have approval from Rhode Island D E M in the core forest. There can be a maximum of, I want to say, 100,000 square feet of tree clearing. We would not be clear-cutting. As you see on the very southern portion of the parcel, that is a hill going down into the flat portion. So there may be some nominal clearing or shortening of any existing trees to eliminate some shade. But other than that, there is no clear-cutting or large-scale tree removal that is contemplated at this time.
So in between these two areas that look like they've been cleared, there are trees in the middle there between those two areas?
Yes, so that middle area, there would presumably be some tree cutting there because if you look to page six of the plan set, that is the conceptual overlay of the solar panels.
So how many trees are we talking about taking down?
I don't have an exact count for you today. And that is information that we would have at the next phase of this review.
Now, what about past the stone wall, looks like that runs down there? What are you doing with the stone wall?
I'm sorry, I'm not seeing specifically.
Runs down the whole left side. Unless they're using a different.
I'm not sure where the, so this site.
Usually they do the stone walls with little circles, but maybe they're doing something different here.
Oh, so that's just kind of a circular colored line that is utilized to demarcate.
Yeah, okay. Another question. The battery storage, how big of a battery storage are we talking about? Something that could catch on fire?
So the, this would be a DC battery storage site. I understand that there's been recent denials of applications for an AC battery storage site. Right now, again, this is conceptual with the battery storage included. That's because there's some legislation pending at the state level that by the time we get to the final stages of our process, battery storage may be required by state legislation with the installation of any new solar facility. So from the outset, we're looking to proceed with the permit for the whole as opposed to potentially getting to the end of the road, legislation being, requiring a battery storage and having to start the process all over again.
What would happen if you didn't have a battery storage? You've got no place to put all this electricity?
I'm sorry?
If you don't have a battery storage area, is there any other way to handle the electricity that's coming off of these panels?
As far as the functionality, maybe I'll invite John up, and he can explain how the inverters and the feedback into the grid works.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering.
I'm John Friend, I'm with Endurance Clean Energy. We were also here and permitted the previous project as ISM Solar. So we've rebranded. Our CEO actually owns the property that is, that has the old, the currently operational solar facility. So he owns that parcel. He bought that from Billy Davis as a, you know, kind of a mechanism of that previous project. So the previous landowner, Billy Davis, obviously, since passed away, his son now owns that southern parcel that we're promoting the development on, and that's who we have the lease option with. So he no longer is using that.
My question is, instead of sending it to a battery storage, could it be sent directly to the grid?
No, no, so the battery from the solar facility, even the one that's adjacent to it, sends energy to the grid without batteries. So the batteries are used as a way to basically store the energy that the solar system produces. So at times of peak need or when the grid needs it, the battery can actually produce more energy or send that energy to the grid. So it makes basically a more resilient grid system. And that's what is really being implemented by the latest legislation. And also, you know, states around the country, Massachusetts, California, they're all requiring batteries as part of new solar systems.
But it's not needed for your business model?
It is actually a part of the business, of the economics of the current plan just due to, you know, factors such as cost of material upgrades that might be needed along the infrastructure that's currently existing on Long Road. We don't anticipate there to be any real big upgrades. They were covered by the last project. So there isn't really anything crazy that we expect as far as.
How far off the ground are they?
They're usually placed in containers. So if you kind of visualize a shipping container, they're all stored in there with their own safety suppression systems in there as well. They're all wired inside of these containers. So I think there's, in the design, I think it shows little blocks. There's either three or four that are planned to be on that. That currently is an existing concrete pad that was used as part of the Superfund site. So that's still existing. It's an impervious surface. We're not asking for anything new to be placed there. The battery containers will be placed right on top of that.
How about the array themselves, how far off the ground? How far off the ground are they?
Typically, I think Smithfield has a regulation for 10 feet or something like that off the ground. 12? It's somewhere between 10 or 12. And we're proposing trackers, which are different from the existing system. So these will actually follow the sun. They'll be more efficiently placed. And because this site is literally flat, it's totally perfect for, as far as shading is concerned and topography.
Do we have any houses around this site?
Let's see. I think there's one across the quarry that is also owned by the current landowner. But as far as visibility from Tarklin or from Log Road, there's, there's no visibility at all.
So there's no houses up around this on Log?
No, just the landowner's property on 167 Tarklin Road. That's right off of Tarklin Road. And then he also owns another building, I think it's shown on 56, 50-67.
Is there any fencing required to go around the panels?
Can you repeat that?
Is it a voltage? Is there any fencing that needs to be around that?
Yep, yes. There has to be a safety fence. I don't remember what the previous fence was. Typically around eight or 10 feet. No, I think that's just required, because this is, it's high voltage. Yeah, so it's high voltage, so you really can't have anyone near it when it's operational or even non-operational, because those wires are, they're huge, if you, you know, if you do touch them. So that's why every single solar system has a safety fence around it. Typically, the fences do have a space underneath it so critters can get through, but obviously you want to avoid anything bigger than, you know, a raccoon or something getting in there.
There's a lot, there's a lot of deer up in that area.
Yes. Yeah, there were a lot of deer in that area. They obviously can't penetrate through that fence. That fence is usually, it's usually pretty tall.
Yum. If I may, you wouldn't happen to have the bill number that is at the legislature that's considering requiring battery component to these things now?
It was the original bill that was passed that did not yet require the battery storage is Senate Bill 2499 passed on June 26th of 2024. As it relates to any of the proposed amendments, I do apologize, I don't have that in front of me, but I can certainly supplement and provide that.
So that's, they're considering that now, if that's at the legislature?
Yeah, so it's currently going through the PUC and the stakeholder process. So there are solar developers and the utility currently making the mechanics of that, of that, of how it would actually interconnect to the utility. So legislation has been passed as far as there needs to be a mechanism for it to be adopted by the utility. It's complex, but similar to when renewable energy first got in the state, there was a legislation for it, and then a mechanism had to be developed by stakeholders and utilities for it to be allowed to interconnect to the grid. So that's where it's currently at. It's currently with, with the utility, the stakeholders, to designate a mechanism for it to be interconnected to the grid.
Chairman?
Yep.
Yes? Is your facility operating just in Rhode Island, or do you have other facilities outside of Rhode Island?
So this particular facility is in Rhode Island. We have, we have several in the state of Maine right now that are operational. But, you know, obviously, this is the one that we're proposing, and the one that's adjacent to it is operational. In the, in the other company, ISM Solar, the rebrand, we have, we actually do, did the landfill in Cranston. So we did the landfill in Cranston. We've developed the one in Coventry on the landfill there. That's currently almost done with construction, and we're also proposing to do a landfill in Coventry.
Are there, excuse me, Charlie, are there any reports or updates as to the operation and how these facilities are running? Have there been any problems with the facilities or anything of that nature?
I don't believe so. Are you talking about some sort of general, like, statewide report or individual project-by-project report?
Either way, if there was an individual project report or a statewide report, I mean, is it inspected at all by the state? Is there any oversight, once the project is up and running? Is there any oversight by the state to review what's going on to see how it's operating?
Yeah, so there's typically an operations and maintenance plan that's provided at the town level when it's going through the permitting process. That typically mandates a couple, at least two visits a year by a technician. They check on the inverters, they make sure everything's functioning correctly. There's no visible damage to roads, transformers, no leakages, stuff like that. As far as I'm, as far as I know, and there have been no issues on the one that's currently operational. A lot of this stuff is also remotely operated, so you don't even have to visit the site. If there is an issue on site, the designated project construction manager will get an alert that there's an issue.
When those inspections are done, do they generate a report?
I believe so. So, you know, the long-term owner-operator would have a report of some, of some kind when there was a maintenance. I don't, I don't think that's provided to the town. I think that's just something that is internal.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Charlie?
Is it a liability insurance that you have to have, and there's a certain amount? Is it needs to be insured or?
I think so. As, as part of the, you know, as part of the development and getting the funding for this project, it needs to be bankable. It needs to be, you know, insurance has to carry as far as, you know, the safety of the project, the environmental aspects of the project.
And what kind of benefits could the town get from financially or anything?
So this is tax, tax benefit. Obviously, no tie-ins to sewer, nothing as far as additional traffic. Again, we're talking about, it's probably like a six-month construction period, but because all the upgrades on Log Road have already been done, you know, you're really just looking at onsite stuff, nothing on Log Road that we can foresee, because the previous project required reconductoring of that. Basically, that was old three-phase along Log Road, and they had to basically put new poles in. They put new reconductoring, you know, a couple miles down the road. So because of those upgrades, we think this is going to be pretty straightforward. The project itself, you know, again, there's not going to be a lot of, a lot of traffic that's going to go into this area.
I was just wondering about the financing, what the town, kind of money the town could get from it.
Yeah, so I believe it's state statute. Is it 5,000 a megawatt? Yeah, so this project, is that DC or AC? I believe it's AC. This project is limited to 3.66 megawatts AC. So 5,000 times that, that would be the annual tax on the, on the project.
Also the tax on the name as well?
Yep.
So from a procedural standpoint, like, yeah, he's asking for a use variation, because the use is prohibited right now by way of the solar.
I understand.
And I also, I also want to point out that state legislation also has made it incredibly difficult to cite solar projects from now on, you know, obviously due to a lot of clear-cutting that's happened in the state. So now, there are very, very limited sites and locations for solar projects to be cited. You have to go through RITM before you even apply to the utility, and they have to approve your site. They have a certain designation, they call it preferred site. So basically, they review it. They have an overlay of, of the trees and what they call core forests, which is unfragmented lines of forest. And you can't clear any more than 100,000 square feet of that core forest if you are even designated to be a solar site. So we've already done that. RITM has approved this site. They've designated this as a preferred site. Yeah. Yeah, I think it's something like that of unfragmented, but there are GIS layers that RITM has provided. So basically, you can, any site in Smithfield or in Rhode Island, you're able to download that layer. You can see if it's in a core forest. And then you submit that to RITM, and they give you the yea or nay on whether you can even apply to have the interconnection for the project.
Any comments about the, go ahead.
I think the board could probably make a good argument, along with the planning department, that this site may be very appropriate for this use. And that, that argument could evolve into an exception.
Grant the variance.
Grant the variance. Sorry. Variance. Use variance.
From what you're showing us, I kind of agree with what Michael says. You know, there's already an existing solar farm there. There's not many, maybe one residential home there, and so you don't have that concern with dropping a solar farm near residence, so.
Correct, yeah, the Davis Liquid Waste Superfund, yeah. We're currently discussing with them. They do a similar comfort letter, basically, as we did on the previous project. Yeah, so we are in, in communication currently. So that'll be obviously a major part of it. We're not, we can't build unless the EPA basically, you know. We know that they're not going to do testing or active remediation on the adjacent site.
Anything else?
Do you guys have anything else you might want to see at the next meeting from us? That would be master plan at that stage, so.
Will there be a requirement that the town planner or the board get copies of the EPA accommodations letter?
Yeah, so, Mike, do you remember when we got that? Was that, that was like preliminary stage? That was pretty late on. I mean, we have to do a lot of environmental work on our own for bankability.
The, the battery issue, making the fire protection, all of that, details on that is something that we had interest in the past and want to have an interest in this.
Yep, so we can, you know, have more details on the actual system itself. Obviously, it's just, you know, kind of blocks on a paper right now, but we can definitely build that out.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Open this up for public comment. If any members of the public would like to come forward to make a comment, please come forward. Not this matter, generally. With no one, no, no one coming forward, do we have a motion?
Move to adjourn.
We have a second. All in favor, aye. All not in favor, the ayes have it.